Yep, and then.
So good.
And my husband is always the one to do that. He's always do that. Oh, so eyeballs on the sensor owl. But since he's sharing, I think it'll, it'll keep, and keep it on here. Oh, see, it doesn't want to turn on the camera because he's sharing. So his, oh, and I can hear myself talking, so.
It doesn't have going.
Maybe that's all.
Yeah. See, oh, man, everything. And about water, so.
Oh, there we go. Our owl is on. He's got eyeball lights.
Oh, yeah.
And it's fine. Okay. And then worst case scenario, we plug this in and then you speed. Make sure that's. You can see it. We can make sure it's.
Laura, you guys.
Because I, I think this is off network, so you shouldn't have the encryption. But. This actually, now it looks like this, but.
Um, if we have questions that are back, maybe.
So every time, even if I.
Set your mic.
Test out your mic. Yeah. You're still muted. It shows the mute symbol for you.
Oh, I can hear in YouTube land at least.
Okay, now it tries. Yeah.
Oh, it's us, never mind.
We can't hear you in the room, but apparently.
No, yeah. Now we can.
Oh, yay. So.
Got me, okay.
Right around, we can hear her. You want to test the share with her voice? We have five minutes still.
Laura, do you want to, do you have the report pulled up on your screen? Do you just want to practice sharing it quick?
Um, I do not have a whole, I can, let me.
Here, are you gonna want?
Do we have to keep this open?
Oh, the, oh, that's when she drags that up.
Yeah, I would think we have to. Well, we could go to people. We can just.
I can do, I'll pull it up, but for now I can do a quick.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I was making sure.
Okay. Okay.
So we can go.
Great.
She's gonna spell it and learn to. That's why I was sorry to hear you know.
Sure.
And I, I quit sharing, so if you share, we should be able to pull it up and test her. Here we go. Ooh, yeah. And then you have to drag him and put him up there. You can do it.
I can do it.
Just scruff like a kitty.
Oops. Please let her in first.
I did say it did, didn't I?
Yeah, but she might have gotten back off thinking it wasn't working. There you go.
There it is.
Bam. Okay, so. It's a sound.
Yeah, and then they're, they are, looking normal.
But. Yes. Ten grown ones. Listen, something we're gonna need to. I'm.
Use, make it hump over that far.
Okay.
And then, like this right now, but again, thirty seconds behind. All right, Jenna's signing in. Uh, do. So. So if you want to come back in for us, but I would rather you.
Sorry, cue for that.
Jen, tell that explanation, that explanation.
But.
Report goes on and then.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Thank you, Jen. No problem.
Should I start you now?
Yes.
Yeah, because they know.
And then.
It does.
They'll do their. So I think all it.
Um, that's just what we.
And then there is on. First of all, she's.
Sit down.
Her second year residence, and right now she's doing it.
And she looks lovely.
This is the doctor Carter. Um, so I was just like. Hmm, yeah, she just like, learn what you're seeing. So I remember here and. We should be doing anything, if she came to publish it.
And there's a few, you can turn her camera on.
So as you stand up.
For, for years from now. Great, I'm building.
I mean. If you're rotating, if she's rotating.
So now we're sharing.
Only past three.
Otherwise, everybody's. But.
And so it's just. All of them off. So whoever did that. Um.
She's in.
I mean, she wants to come back to.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know. Tell you and see.
Okay, so now at least. Either. Call her.
Right this minute.
Has homework that you'd like to see from staff? Or additional analysis to be had, or? Or, uh, you know, a part two of this discussion pertaining to some of the smaller recommendations? That, uh, that you, uh, learn about, we'd be happy to do any of the above. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, defer the floor to? Zalima and her team and our consultant, uh, that would be very appreciated.
Very good.
Hey, councilors, good evening. Our pleasure to be here with you tonight. Uh, as you may recall, this has been a project, actually several years in the making. Um, in November of 2022, I actually applied for the grant to the Toronto County Red Joint Powers Board to fund half of this project. Uh, you graciously accepted that grant in January of 23, and we spent the majority of calendar year 23 working with the various stakeholders that include the city of Casper, Natrona County, Natrona County School District, City of Mills, Town of Evansville, Town of Arnon, and Visit Casper. So this has been a very collaborative process. We spent a majority of calendar year 2023, um, identifying, you know, what we wanted to see come out of the study, establishing the scope of work, um, and then going through the RFP process and ultimately selecting RDG Planning and Design um, to come and do this body of work for us. So we executed the agreement with RDG in October of 2023. So I've had the privilege of working very closely with them all for almost a year now. Um, and they have been working really hard on what has become. Yeah, I mean, it was a massive project to begin with, and, um, and I think what they have to share with you tonight is a really impressive uh, body of work that will guide our efforts in park and rec- parks and recreation for the next 10 to 20 years, and we're really excited about that. So with that, uh, I'm going to turn the floor over to the consultants, but I wanted to, um, just remind you, my team is here to help answer questions. If you have questions specifically for staff. And the RDG Planning and Design Team is Ryan Peterson. He is a project manager. He's going to be doing, um, a lot of the presentation today. Laura Peters is joining us online, uh, so she will also be available to answer questions. Scott Karen is with Ballard King. Um, he partnered with the rest of the consultant team to provide some critical components of the evaluation. And Jared Behringer from our local agency, CDPI, uh, was kind of their boots on the ground for a lot of the project. So we are all here to answer any questions, and with that, I will turn it over.
Well, thank you, uh, Zalima for the introduction. It's been a great privilege to work with you and your team. Uh, Mr. City Manager, Your Honor, councilors, uh, we are grateful for this opportunity. And so, um, what we have here, as, as was previously said, is a PowerPoint presentation that summarizes the body of work. Um, and we're going to start where we left off last, um, uh, this past February. And I'm going to share my screen here, and, and I guess if I get the thumbs up when we're good to go, we'll dive right in.
Thanks. There. Uh, would you like us to pepper you with questions throughout the presentation? You want us to hang tight till we get through it and then, uh, wait at the end? How would you prefer?
Um, Zalima, do you have a preference?
Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, I think throughout the presentation, that's probably appropriate, given that there's going to be.
That's fine. As long as that wasn't going to screw up his presentation. That, I think, addressed the issue when it comes up.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good.
Okay, great. All right, well, we're going to get started and really appreciate the team. I think Zalima introduced them, but Scott, Jared, um, they've been tremendous to work with, and, uh, it's been a real collaboration with all of us. So, um, let's see here. All right. So we've already went through introductions. We're going to talk a little bit about the project timeline, and then we're going to pick up where we left off last time, this past, uh, February with the public feedback. Uh, as you recall, we are all gathered here, and then we had an open house afterwards. Uh, we've met with numerous stakeholders and so forth. Scott Karen is going to talk a little bit about the market assessment that he's completed. Um, and then also the deep dive into the operations. And then we're going to talk at a high level, the recommendations. We know there's, I, I believe there's 200 and some odd pages to this document that, um, you have not seen, um, but you have seen, uh, hopefully the executive summary, at least what Zalima had prepared for you. So we're going to talk about the high level recommendations and then, uh, some of the priorities and costs associated with that. And then give you a little bit of an overview of the report. Uh, the plan here is that tomorrow, this document will be posted online on the project website. And individuals will be able to download it, review it, um, and then submit comments right on that website so we can track them. Um, that's very helpful for us, especially as we, you know, have a very large network of, of folks throughout the, uh, region who are going to be commenting on this. So having the opportunity to hear from all of them through the online means is, is fantastic. Uh, and then so with that, we'll go into next steps, which is, uh, hopefully fairly brief. Going to bypass this, we've been through that. Um, and just to, not necessarily to repeat what, uh, Zalima had shared with you earlier, um, the agreement was signed in October. In essence, once we were able to get the files to, uh, download all of the, the materials in earnest, we really hit the boots on the ground in December, where we started to visit the parks. Uh, Jared and his team were out in the field assessing the condition of them, uh, evaluating, uh, the quality, um, and then working with RDG team on that. Uh, in January, Scott was well into the market assessment. We were here in February, uh, we had more than 900 responses to the, uh, public input survey, so that we thought that was, uh, fantastic. It was a really engaged, uh, your community is very engaged in the park system and, and they care deeply about it. Uh, we had the public open house here. And then we continued on throughout the spring and summer, um, developing the content of this report. And in the past, we'll call it 60 days, it's been really dialing in, uh, the report and the recommendations. Uh, so where we go from here, which is part of our next step, since we got the public comment period, um, we'll be looking to get input from you tonight. And together, um, ultimately later this fall, we hope to bring back a document for your adoption. So really, there's five ways in which we receive public input. Um, and so this is the first part of our discussion tonight. We had the online survey. We had 900 plus responses. We had more than 20 user group meetings. Those are entities or organizations that you may have a lease with. Uh, we had the steering committee, uh, which guided this process throughout, along with technical individuals who gave us feedback on things from irrigation to mowing to how you manage things. Um, we had the open house where folks were able to put dots on, uh, certain strategies or, um, emphasize certain things with comments. Um, we had public comments that came in online to the website. Um, there's a lot. Um, it was very robust, and, um, as I mentioned earlier, your community is very engaged. And so, um, it was, it was, uh, great to see all of that, uh, come together, um, and ultimately help inform, uh, ultimately our recommendations as one of the key driving factors. So we're going to touch base on the public input survey. Uh, so this was hosted again online. Uh, just a little bit about the breakdown. So 16% of the respondents were aged 18 to 34. Uh, those who are aged 35 to 54 throughout, um, you know, we didn't restrict where you could take the survey from. Uh, but generally speaking, it's from the Toronto County and, and actually mostly privately from, uh, Casper. Um, and then 21% of those who took the survey were age 55 or older. And then two thirds of those individuals who took the survey have children, uh, something to keep in mind as you look at the trends that came out of this. So, um, you know, below, uh, this is our list of the, of the top 13, we're calling it, and you'll see why here in a moment. Um, but ultimately there was, um, and, and it's not hard to see why. Um, as I was, uh, driving Cast- down Castromout in late last night after our meetings, um, you know, the city is beautiful. And so, uh, you have the tremendous asset there, and I think it's what defines, you know, the community from the river to the mountains to the plains. So enjoying nature is no surprise that that is the number one thing that people enjoy most. Uh, indoor recreation, though, uh, pursuant to our conversations with the stakeholders and those who are, um, uh, participating in recreational or athletic events, uh, appreciate the indoors, uh, in March and April, when it might be a little bit windy, uh, and especially during the cooler months. Trails, uh, camping, more trails, um, relaxing, I don't think any of these are surprises. Um, skiing and snowboarding, and Scott's going to touch base here a little bit on the market trends and what we're seeing across the nation. And, and these, um, the favorability to these things is directly in line was in line with what Scott is seeing. Fishing, um, off-road biking, education, baseball, dog parks and softball. Um, ultimately, those were the areas of greatest need, and we'll, we'll show you a slide here in a minute that, uh, dives deeper into that. Um, we did ask respondents how often they, uh, visit a park. And so, again, we broke it down by the different ages here. But overall, you can see this top line here, one or more visits per week, uh, which means those that took the survey and, and probably your community uh, is very engaged with your park system. Um, and then we also asked them, how, um, uh, do you, how often, uh, do you ride or walk or, or, uh, get to a park? Um, whether it be on your bike or by foot. And generally speaking, that is the primary means in which folks get to their parks. So, uh, accessibility, proximity, um, is key when you think about your park system as, as a whole. Um, this was the slide I had talked about already. I mentioned the top 13 here, and if you look at, um, this is, you know, everything to the right, I guess, of this red line here. Um, you know, represents more than 200, uh, individuals who, uh, said that this is one of their primary things that they see as what being the greatest need throughout the region. That doesn't mean that those that are below this line are not, uh, spoken favorably of. Um, but it does give us a little bit of an insight, at least into what the survey takers are thinking in terms of where we could improve. Um, we also asked questions about funding. Um, and so, you know, we asked, would you support a special purpose tax? If it was committed to the elements that they supported here? And then you can see here in this slide, there is some green, uh, green here means you agree. The dark green means that you strongly agree. Um, and you can see how the changes, um, uh, change or the responses change, uh, depending on the ages, um, of those who took the, uh, survey. Uh, we also ask individuals to rate the quality of the parks. We ourselves went out and assessed the quality of the park from a professional standpoint, but we wanted to hear what individuals in the community thought. Generally speaking, the younger you are, the lower the rating of the park system, the older you are, the higher the rating for the park system. So 3.7, I guess, stars, if we're going to use Google Speak, um, out of, uh, five. It was, uh, kind of the top line and 3.2 is the bottom line. So, uh, doing pretty good in most areas. There's room for improvement in some areas and, and there's, um, you know, some opportunities here to reconcile across the board, and we'll talk about that. We also asked questions about, uh, spending, uh, if there were budget restrictions and what would you support or oppose? Um, and it's interesting, I, you know, we looked at it, do you have children or not, to see if there was any trends? And generally, you can kind of compare the top and bottom. These are the same questions, just in alignment, if you look at them in columns like that. Um, we asked, we, you know, if the city had to reduce the level of maintenance in parks and trails, you would mow less, less garbage collection, reducing irrigation. How do you feel about that? 45% of the individuals strongly oppose that. Another, um, 30%, so almost about seven, well, 75% generally oppose reducing the level of maintenance in parks and trails. When we looked at reducing the number of recreation programs, you can see there's a, a little bit of a difference between, you know, if you have children or not. If you have children, you're not as, um, likely to support reducing the number of recreational programs offered. Um, as, as well as, um, you know, if you do not have children, um, you know, you're maybe a little bit more open to reducing the recreational program offerings. And then we asked about response times. Um, those, uh, you can see, I guess, both top and bottom line, there's a lot of red and orange, which means that generally speaking, most people oppose or strongly oppose reducing the response time for taking care of maintenance issues along the parks and trails. So we have very high expectations, uh, within the community as it relates to maintenance, as it relates to programming, as it relates to the response time. And so I think, you know, when you get into this, there's going to be this tightrope or this balancing act of, of, of where we spend or where we don't spend or where we reduce and where we increase and, and that juggling act. So I would encourage you to keep that in mind as you review the document. Um, another question we asked was, you know, if you had, uh, $10 to contribute to the park system, where would you put a dollar? And you can see that facilities maintenance, grounds maintenance, improving trails, more rec space, more indoor rec space, and expanded trail network, we're definitely, um, the top five. Um, and then you can see right below, that is expanding softball and baseball fields, pickleball, uh, more athletic fields, more dog parts, parks, and improving tennis courts. Again, it doesn't mean that if you're not in the top, that it's not favorable. It just means that it might not be the highest priority of those who took the survey. Um, we asked about, um, looking ahead, the next two to five years. Um, what would you support or oppose any of these priorities? And I know you are not probably able to read the screen here, but we're going to start here. Um, and this first graphic looks at maintaining parks, trails and open spaces at the current level. Um, people are showing tremendous support for doing so. Uh, so looking ahead, they want to continue to see investment and support in the park system. Looking ahead again, uh, folks are very speaking very favorably or supporting expanding the, and, and upgrading the current parks and open spaces. So they want it good, but they also want to expand. Um, and then lastly, keep parks and open spaces clean and well cared for was the highest, um, received the highest support when we look ahead in the next two to five years. So, um, it, it was really a challenge for us as we started to think about all of the improvements that need to be made, you know, when we go, how we go about prioritizing this, and, and later on in this discussion, you'll see how, um, we think, um, you could address that. Um, and then I'm going to leave you with one of the tight ropes. I've used that term a few times now, but restoring natural areas, uh, reducing mowing, you know, what's the tolerance? In 2014, in the master plan that you did then, you asked the same question. We asked it again to kind of understand where the public was. I would say we're still fairly divided, but we are seeing a little bit of an openness to, let's say there's a low light round that might be along a river that is generally wet, it's in a flood plain. Uh, we believe that based on what we're seeing here, there is some tolerance to begin to reduce that. And when Scott shares with you, you know, maybe there's a way to shift, we'll call it mowing time into time spent in other places. Maybe there's a trade-off there that you're willing to make. And so, um, again, I think, um, that's, that's going to be something we have to balance. Um, I'm not going to run through this slide here because I effectively, um, shared that as we went along. Um, but, um, with that, I'll, I'll pause, and then if there's any immediate questions, we can certainly, we're here as long as we need to be. If there's any immediate questions on that, we can take it now. Otherwise, I'm going to have Scott Karen to come up and talk about the market assessment.
Questions, anybody?
Go for it.
Yep. All right. Thank you, City Manager, Your Honor, Councilor, for allowing us to be here. Again, we're excited to, to present the, the findings of, of this report and, uh, as we move forward. And one of the things that, that, uh, we do often within Parks and Recreation Master Plans is we need to understand what the market is for participation. Uh, Ryan and his team and Jared, uh, were primarily focused, focused on the built environment, but we were focused on how people utilized those amenities and, and within that. So the purpose of the market assessment is to understand the demographics and how people are utilizing them. Um, and we did look at all of the areas that mentioned, uh, you see a little bump out node. We did, uh, incorporate Glen Rock into the demographics because we know and understand that they're coming this way to utilize your park system uh, in general, and, and especially on your programming side of things. So we want to understand all of the, the activities that take place, and then we want to take a look at it from a recreation trends perspective. As the City Manager, uh, alluded to, to understand both nationally, regionally, and then locally, what those participation rates are and what those trends are as to how to program and look to the future and what those opportunities may be. And so when we started taking a look at the, the market assessment, and then the, the, uh, chart on your right is for Natrona County, um, as well as Glen Rock was included in that. Um, but basically, when we look at the market, what we, what we identified is the median age is similar to, to the state, uh, as well as the national number. One of the things that we often look for is a lower median in, uh, age, um, and the reason is because that's an indicator of a higher, and a higher number of children. And children participate and utilize park systems on a, a more significant basis than what others do, other than trails. Um, when we start talking about the, the household income, it's lower than the state, the national average. Um, and the reason why that is important is because the ability to pay for recreation programs and services. And I understand you guys do a wonderful job of providing swimming for free for some of your residents. Um, again, so those are good opportunities, and we would, we would suggest that you continue to, to provide that as well as sponsorship programs for your, for, uh, some of those populations that may need it. So, um, but it's just part of that consideration in the program as a whole when we start talking about it. Um, and then, uh, the, the last item on there is the market potential. And again, uh, the market potential is, is looking at on the, the number on that far right on that, that chart is the 100 is the national uh, participation rate average. Um, and so if it's higher than people in this area and have a higher market potential and use and, and for those, I will, uh, make noted, just because it's below does not mean that they aren't interested in it, but it may be because the facilities are not of the quality that allows them to, to participate in at the higher, at a higher rate. Um, there may not be facilities available. So again, the market potential isn't there because the facilities aren't there to be able to meet the demands that, that are, that are present. So again, we take all that into, to account. So, uh, when we start looking at national trends, um, the, the parts on your right are kind of the national trends overall on some of the, the activities that we take, we took a look at. There are over 58 different activities. We pulled out the ones that we felt were most appropriate to this area. Um, so the, the trends nationally are specialized programs, so that a lot of places are charging those fees for programs. Senior programming, uh, as a, as a society, nationally, we're becoming older, we're not having as many children. And so the, the, uh, there are double-digit increases in the, the population that is 55 plus. We anticipate that's continued to happen here. Family activities are becoming a, a even, uh, a more important aspect of recreation moving forward. Outdoor recreation, again, this is a great hub of activity for those taking place, but we, what we've seen is greater divis- diversity within that and also cross participation. So those that are interested in mountain biking are also now more interested in hiking or camping or fishing and doing those other activities. So that's what we've noticed is sometimes the core participation in some of those activities may not be increasing, but their participation in other activities that are related to it is increasing. Um, youth travel sports is, uh, has seen a major boom over the last five to 10 years, and we can see, and we, we see that continuing. Uh, so there is, that places greater demand on, on fields. Uh, because not only now are, are organizations looking, uh, at the, the fields that they're using, what we considered practice fields before is not to the quality of what their expectations are. They're expecting to play on game fields, so that's putting additional pressures on it. Also, their travel teams that are practicing not just once and twice a week, but three and four times a week. Again, adding pressure to those existing facilities. The seasons are longer and they're, actually, a lot of them are participating year-round now. Uh, again, additional pressure is placed on things. Um, and so even though the chart on the right says baseball and softball overall nationally is decreasing in participation, it's not for the seven and 12-year-olds. Um, and, and the reason it's decreasing is because adult participation in adult softball is especially slow pitch softball is declining. Um, and it has been for a while. So when we take a look at softball, it's not just fast pitching, uh, but it's, it's overall. So again, so just because it says it's decreasing nationally doesn't mean that that's, uh, exactly everything that's happening that is occurring. We're very fortunate to get some, uh, participation numbers from the local users. And, uh, as you can see, the, the growth is, is continuing. The, the one comment I'll make on youth baseball, the reason that, that numbers decline, which is not a tremendous amount, but is because the interest in those particular age groups. And so they're having to cap capacity in certain age groups and certain levels, and so their overall participation may drop, but the, the interest is still there in some of those activities. So, uh, we know youth softball is going to continue to increase, just be, um, with Wyoming now sanctioning that as a high school sport. So we know that's going to continue, especially on the girls, uh, fast pitch side. When we took a look at your overall recreation programs, uh, we identify, we, we break them up into three primary areas. One being your core programs, where the core programs and services that you're currently providing. And those are the ones on the left, and I think all of you would probably agree with all of those. The, the next ones are support, um, in which we, we would say that you are providing some to, those to a certain extent, but not, um, full offerings in those. And then the ones on the right are either ones that you just are not offering, or, um, you're just, they're, they're just very limited in what they're, they're, what is out there. So moving forward and trying to under, other, I understand and identify within the area, who is providing all of those activities as a whole? Put those X marks, uh, by what, what is being provided by the city as well as what is being provided by others. Um, and so you'll, you'll know, um, and it, it's been unfortunate here, the, the challenges that are facing teens. Um, and so that's, that's an area that we, we did identify, and again, we, this was done back in, in February and March, uh, took place. Um, but we identified that as an area where there are just not very many opportunities for teens to participate in, in programs and activities. Um, so that, that does lead to unfortunate events. So all of that, uh, that, what, what we look at participation wise is we do need to establish that programming philosophy and program plan. What that helps do is to emphasize those, those youth sport programs, outdoor recreation. Maybe within outdoor recreation, that can be elevated. There are a lot of opportunities, but maybe, as I mentioned earlier about the, people are more interested in other activities that their cross participation. Maybe it's your provider now renting, um, some equipment so that those can be, those activities could take place or, or you could partner with somebody to be able to do those types of things. Uh, again, partner for teen activities, the city should not be the sole provider of those types of things. There are many departments, um, and other organizations that should assist with the development of that. Uh, marketing is, is a considerable item and issue that, that we believe should be addressed. Uh, you guys have some wonderful assets, you have some wonderful programs, uh, but, uh, there's just limited, uh, staffing that is available to, to focus on, uh, the recre- parks and recreation, uh, department itself and what they're doing and they're providing for the community. So a lot of times within the survey, we notice is, is people just didn't, weren't aware of some of the offerings and providing, uh, of the city. So we would recommend, uh, developing a healthy plan, putting additional staffing, uh, as well as time into that. So those are kind of the, what we, uh, the conclusions of all of the, the market, uh, items. And so again, if I'll take a little bit of a pause there, if there is any questions on any of those items in particular.
Thank you. I had one, um, back a couple of slides. You had the, we're showing the percentage increase and decrease and different, that one. And I'm just looking at the, um, the percentage increase and decrease, is that comparing 2013 to 22 then?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So when we did this study, we didn't have 2023 data. Um, so it was, so we did 10 years, over 10 years. It's 20, 2013 to 22, 22, uh, participation. So the number is 1.7, that's 1.7 million, uh, participants. So as you can see in pickleball, pickleballs have been explosive growth over the past.
Well, I don't know if I'm, they've confused by the, by the decimal, but are those? Uh, maybe like a 12 to 14%? That's a, that says a 10% increase? Like on soccer, for example?
Yes.
Is it increased?
Uh, there was 12.8 million participants, um, in 2013, and then 2022, 14.1 million participants. And so that's a 10% increase in the participation.
Oh, I see. It's a percent increase. I see. I see. Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I swear.
Um, I've seen a couple of times that you've recommended to implement stuff for teens and seniors. Do you have any idea of what those would be?
Sure. So, uh, within seniors or, um, the primary thing is, is they're being, they're much more active than what they were before. So the traditional senior center, um, within those, and again, I know and understand that the city is not the, the primary provider of, of that here uh, i- in Casper, but is, uh, there's, there's a declining interest in just going to, um, a, a facility and having a congregational meal. They still want congregational meal, but, um, is the, the card games and the board games and those kind of things. They still want the socialization, but they want increased activities. So it's programs that are taking, that should, should and could take place during those times. And again, there's some of those are, and I'm sure they're, they're doing them currently. We didn't evaluate what the programs that were occurring there because we focused on the city, um, and, and Toronto County as a whole. So we, I didn't quite get into what they are in particular doing. But a lot of times what they're looking for is additional health and wellness activities as well. Um, so that's, they're, they're looking for education, they're looking for computers, um, and they're looking for active, uh, things to do. Uh, as far as teens, um, there's three primary areas that, that they're looking for, um, that we found. One is social activities. So, um, they like to, to hang out, they like to dance, they like to go to concerts, things that, that are engaging them from a social perspective and involve a lot of, a lot of others. Uh, the next one is esports and gaming. Uh, esports and gaming is a tremendous, uh, opportunity to engage, engage that, that demographic in that, uh, that area. Um, and then lastly, um, they're, they're, uh, much more interested in the arts than what they, what they were previously. Uh, that's what we found. So there's a three, what, three broad areas that, uh, can be brought, uh, around the world.
Thank you.
Continue on. Thank you for the pause.
Yes, sir. So next, uh, we, we reviewed, again, kind of taking the market and understanding all of that and what the, the operations, uh, are, entail, uh, here within the area. And so we talked a little bit, uh, about the level of service that's provided. So again, kind of comparatively, how th- this area is looking at the services and the facilities that are being provided. the services and the facilities that are being provided. And so what we do is, is we take the population and based on what the current, uh, facilities are compared to what some of the demographics are nationally and, uh, use rates in tho- of those facilities. And so we'll talk about swimming here in just a second. We're gonna go, we have another, uh, slide on that one in particular. But in general, uh, the facilities that are being provided here, um, are, are, are of a, a comparable nature to what is, is found in other communities, uh, with the exception of diamonds and rectangles. Again, um, there's a, there's just a need based on a couple of different things that, that we take a look at. Number, number one is, uh, just a national perspective comparing the demographics, you know, as to what those, those numbers are. Um, and then also we take a look at surveys, but then also local participation. So when you combine all of that, that's where we come up with the recommendation for needing additional, uh, diamonds and rectangles. We don't really define, um, you know, the sizes of those. Um, and one of the hardest parts is especially on rectangles. Um, because if you have an eighty by one twenty, uh, that can be made, uh, eighty yards by a hundred and twenty yards. It's a full-size soccer field for, for adults typically or U fifteen, U eighteen, age group, like that can be broken up into three fields for a U ten, uh, or even four fields for a U six or U, U eight. So, um, again, just try, the, there are additional demands for those types of things. Um, again, uh, you've been talking about playing football. You just, you know, football field, everybody understands is a hundred yards. It's a hundred and twenty with the end zones, fifty-three and a third yards, uh, wide. But when you play flag football, you can use one field to go and go in two different directions typically. So, um, it's, it's, it's a hard number to deal with, come up with exactly, but comparatively there is demand there. Uh, diamonds, kind of same thing. One of the things we always tell, tell folks is you can always make a big field small, but you can't make a small field big, big. Um, and so, uh, but with that said, uh, I know all U ten, U, U twelve, they like to play on appropriately sized fields, um, or at least have fences, you know, te- temporary fences to be able to do that, rather than play on three hundred-foot field, which is very intimidating for a lot of those different age groups. So, um, facility-wise, overall, we love. Um, I, I spoke, there, the previous slide identified swimming pools as, uh, having a little bit of an oversaturation as far as Casper is concerned. Uh, this, the national average is one outdoor pool per thirty thousand in population, sometimes even, um, you know, twenty-five thousand in population. So, uh, there are four outdoor pools here, population around sixty thousand. If you include Nittany County, it's eighty thousand. So, um, that's one measurement. That's only one measurement in looking at, at swimming. The other one that you, that, that, uh, needs to be considered is the level of service, um, in that area around them. So what we did is we mapped each of those facilities and put a two-mile radius, which is what we consider all of your pools are, what we consider neighborhood pools, which typically have a one and a half to two-mile radius as far as participation is used is concerned. And as you can see, there's a considerable amount of overlap within that central area, uh, particularly in Wa- Washington Park. Um, you're a little underserved on the east side, if you will, um, as far as outdoor pools are concerned. The other factor is, which, which we didn't map, uh, map this, uh, for you guys tonight, is there are indoor facilities as well. So Cheyenne has the Aquatics Center, there are two high school pools, uh, and the YMCA. So when we take a look at it, that, that's a lot of water, uh, for the, the community. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, but we, we always like to point that out. The challenge that presents is aquatics is a pretty expensive venture for a, a community to undertake. Um, the operations here recover about, uh, sixty percent uh, of their, their, uh, operating costs overall. Um, nationally, what it's, it's anywhere from fifty to seventy percent. So it's not bad, um, as far as what your, your, your function recovery is concerned. Um, but when we took a look at some of the individual facilities themselves, uh, the cost per user was approaching eighteen and twenty dollars per user. It's what's, what, what the, the residents are essentially subsidizing for that person to utilize that pool. The reason we bring that up is because when you start to prioritize all of the needs and wants within the community, um, that's, we, we want to identify areas where there's a little, there's a, a, a tremendous amount of, uh, investment in this area, which is great and wonderful. But when we're looking for opportunities to be able to invest in other parts of the year of the community, what are some opportunities to be able to do so? And aquatics may be one of them. So that's why we wanted to ensure that we bring that up. So overall, um, the, the Parks Recreation Facilities Department is made of three different divisions. Uh, the, our primary focus is on parks and recreation, although I certainly want to ensure you guys that the Buildings and Structures Division provides a tremendous amount of support to all of those. Uh, but we just didn't, uh, quite look at that, that department as much. So when we look at it overall from, of the, the perspective of the, you know, what, what the assets are, and we do comparative analysis, um, there are two hundred and fifty acres that are actively managed, um, and maintained with turf grass. When we start taking a look at what the staffing requirements of the entire system, in particular that, as we look at somewhere between one to twelve, one to twenty staff per acres. And so when we start doing those ratios, you can see down below what that looks like from a staffing perspective as to what you have and what you should, uh, be able to provide. We did note that on the park staff, there are seasonal staff as well. I believe it's nine seasonal staff are, 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 uh, within the park side of things. When we look at athletic fields, it's, we typically look at one staff per four fields in general. Um, so again, it kind of gives you the ratio of, of the number of staff, uh, that, that are looking to be able to maintain, uh, quality facilities. And, and as the survey indicated, people are interested in that additional investment and improvements, uh, to the quality of the, the, uh, park system. So the, starting to get towards the end. So, uh, and the, when we start looking at revenues and expenditures, what we would say is you guys do a tremendous job, you know. So when you look at overall, you guys do a tremendous job of, of charging fees, uh, to your residents or participation in, in activities and events and rentals and all that kind of stuff. In fact, you charge, you, you, the funding for the department overall is almost fifty percent of the overall budget. Um, and when we compare that nationally, it's about twenty-five percent. So tax-supported, um, you know, your tax-supported, supported to about fifty-three percent, which is less than, than nationally, it's around seventy percent. So again, the, the residents are, are getting a good amount, good value for their dollars, especially when we start to take a look at on the expenditure side of things. Um, so nationally, personnel, uh, make up about fifty-five percent of the expenditure budget. Here it's about fifty-one percent. Uh, capital, or the, or, so that's, uh, again, you guys are doing a good job, uh, to provide and being very efficient at providing the service, uh, to your park system overall. Um, again, uh, when we look at expenditures per acre, you guys are about sixty-eight hundred. Nationally, it's about nine thousand. And when I say nationally, it's be- it's from the, the population of fifty to a hundred thousand. We don't just say, all right, everywhere across the country. We, we looked in particular at the fifty to a hundred thousand, uh, population. So I want to make sure that's, that I do clarify that. Again, what this tells us is you guys need additional staff, but the staff that you have are doing a tremendous job of taking care of your park system. So wrapping all of that up, uh, there are additional athletic fields that we would recommend, uh, be provided within the community. The maintenance levels should be, uh, increased. There are a number of mechanisms to be able to do that, certainly. By increasing the number of staff to be able to take care of them is one, but then also developing standards. And so not all of your parks could or should be maintained in the exact same way. Uh, those that are, have a higher use or that are, are what you, you would consider signature parks should receive additional maintenance than some that are lightly used. Um, and then also there's an opportunity to convert turf grass to, to natural, uh, your, uh, natural, uh, turf to allow for your staff to focus on other areas of your park system, uh, that, that need additional maintenance and help. Um, and I'll just gonna finish one and we'll get right to you. So, uh, the, and again, the outdoor pools, we're not saying close it. What we're saying is when, when it, when the investment is, is, is to a point that it's going to consider, it's going to require considerable sum, sum of money, or there are life safety issues, you may want to consider closing that and replace that with another aquatic amenity such as a splash pad, which has a considerable lower operational cost too. So.
Thanks again, Rob.
Thank you. Uh, all great information. Uh, I was asked, I was wondering if you could clarify for me the conversion of turf to natural. Do you mind? Um, I'm not sure I'm following. Do you mind?
Yes. Yeah. So, uh, like Bermuda grass or, or bluegrass, the, you know, nat- you know, it's, it's irrigated and mowed. And I know you, every, every community has a standard as the, the height of the grass, but there, there are low-brow, uh, natural grasses that, that could be in places, uh, rather than, um, just the, the grasses that are mowed every single week or in spring, you know, twice a week almost to be able to take it to keep up.
Thank you. I wasn't quite sure if you were implying like the zero escaping, which we've talked about, but it sounds like it's a slightly different, just more native grasses that require a little bit less.
And that would be an opportunity or an option too, um, is to go to zero escape. But, uh, it, it, again, I think probably going from, uh, manicured grass to that is, is quite a leap, if you will, for residents to, to, to take. Um, and so if, if you convert some of those spaces to, or natural grasses, um, or other types of landscape allowed.
Any other questions at this time? Continue on.
Well, we, we're gonna get an opportunity to ask questions about the actual executive summary content or would that relate with the game or?
We still have, uh, Ryan, I think is, is gonna come up and, and talk to a little bit more about recommendations and everything after that. So, thank you.
All right. Um, so recommendations and then priorities and then it's, uh, time for more discussion. So, um, at a high level, uh, we've got five key things here, just overall, uh, looking at number one. Um, there's going to be strategic investments within athletic complexes that you're going to see outlined within the report. Um, there is a need for additional fields. I think you've heard that from, uh, Scott Loud and Clear. And we are recommending that you take a deeper dive into the feasibility, but then also looking at the economic impact of those investments, because I think ultimately, you know, what's good for, uh, drawing individuals into the community is good for the citizens of Casper and hopefully the other way around as well. But there is an economic impact of parks and I think you need to look at multiple sites, you know, which potentially includes Crossroads, North Casper, the Amical Commons property and likely others, uh, that would be suitable, uh, for, uh, you know, competitive sports. Uh, secondly is the population distribution and the amenity adjacency. So Scott talked about, uh, benchmarks and RPA being one of them. Um, overall, um, the community is doing well. You are meeting your, uh, the benchmarks, uh, from a national standpoint, at least from an acreage perspective. Uh, the geographic distribution, generally speaking, is pretty well-balanced, uh, but there are definitely some areas that are underserved and some areas that are overserved. And we looked at, um, the proximity to, we'll call it neighborhood parks to elementary school playgrounds. That was one of the, the, the benefits of doing this plan together. And there are areas within this, or with, there are parks within this, um, report that you will, uh, see that we are recommending, uh, maybe considering divesting or changing the use or considering a different direction long-term. Freedom Park being directly across from, I believe it's Cottonwood Elementary. Um, Cottonwood Elementary is maintained very well, uh, great outdoor offerings. That might be, that, that's just one example of where you could look into that. Um, I do want to, uh, consider and emphasize that there are a number of past planning efforts that were done by the MPO. Um, we reference those, um, but when you think about giving the residents instead of their own specific park to go to, consider linking them so you get a bigger experience, but you still have your neighborhood park. Um, connectivity is key when we think about the seniors and the teens, uh, those who don't have a driver's license or aren't able to drive. Uh, having access to those facilities into those parks nearby or those amenities is key. So that's something, uh, to continue. We also would suggest so that you diversify those offerings, whether it be in play. A lot of the play structures we looked at were suitable for elementary school students. But if you wanted to hang out and, uh, interact with saw lighted swing set, you know, one day, or maybe there's different types of, of pools or, or aquatic facilities, uh, that aren't necessarily, uh, you know, just a simple splash pad. Maybe there's a different offering to that. Uh, but let's get creative there. Um, outdoor aquatics are overserved. Um, Scott, at that point, I think as you look at the future, you know, what is the right balance? Um, and when it comes to that point in time, you'll have further discussion, I'm sure. Uh, but overall, the park system is appropriate for the community as a whole. Um, and it, and we found that, um, you know, if you were to stand back and look at this from a, a Laura, who also does a fair amount of, uh, community and regional planning, if you were to step back and look at it, um, you're doing, you're doing a good job. Um, and, um, there are some communities that you look at the map and you're like, there's a lot of gray here. And these individuals, you know, it's no wonder there are, are issues that they're having to address. Here, uh, you are doing well and don't have that issue. Um, number three is the existing facility quality. I think we've talked about this already. Public has high expectations, um, the citizens do. Um, generally speaking, you know, most of the smaller neighborhood parks are of adequate quality. Um, there are some playgrounds, sport court issues that need to be addressed, but really I think you'll see our focus here is mostly the regional athletic facilities. Those are the ones that are, we see that are in a concerning state, some of them being fifty, sixty years old. Um, buildings being condemned and so forth, and I know you're fully aware of that. Um, we talked a little bit about the operational already, the natural area versus turf lawn area conversion. Um, what we're talking about is reducing the amount of labor inputs into these areas. So think of a, a, what is it, a Scottish golf course. I'm not a huge golfer, uh, twice a year maybe, uh, but where the rough and the fairway gets to be about a foot tall. You know, that's what we're thinking is that, you know, maybe it's a, a no-mo or a low-mo, something like that, um, to help reduce that input from a labor side, cost side. Focusing the operational responses, um, we think that, you know, right now it's a little bit of, we get a call, we go address it right away. Well, can you wait till Thursday? And, and on Thursday you address all of those issues. Uh, that's something that we think there's an opportunity to help streamline and focus those, uh, maintenance and operations. And then, um, the rules of the park or trail, um, most citizens are, are very reasonable and very respectful of the facilities you have. Um, but a little bit of peer pressure wouldn't hurt if there was a very clear set of, um, guidelines or rules that you should abide by. Um, and it, and it does help because, you know, it makes it very clear that maybe your dog shouldn't be doing that, or maybe this shouldn't be happening there. Um, and then lastly, system-wide improvements, we're going to run through that in the report. Uh, I do want to note, um, Aaron talked about the areas to invest or potentially divest, uh, interstate, uh, park being another one that, you know, um, we believe, you know, is warranting, um, further discussion about that. And then the standardization of, you know, park features, lighting, security, furnishings, um, helping from a maintenance and operation standpoint. Um, and in the report, we talked a little bit about, you know, the importance of lighting, but also the context with, which you are lighting within. Uh, neighborhood lighting versus areas that are in commercial lighting versus areas that are maybe a sports complex. All have a different, um, expectation and appropriateness. Um, and what we're really looking for there um, is uniformity and consistency. The, and taking a deep dive here for a minute, but the eye has a really hard time adapting from really bright areas to dark areas. It's like when you wake up in the morning, you turn the light on, you're like, whoa, you know. It, it's similar impact when you talk about lighting. So being uniform and consistent is key, um, as you think about that in the future. Uh, we talked about this already a little bit, um, some of the areas that aren't as well-served. What you're looking at here is the green dots, that's quarter-mile buffer. That means you're doing great. The, the green outline is the half-mile buffer. So what we're really looking for is these gaps here, um, that are in between those areas. That's where there, there does need to be some action. If it's within a green circle, the, that population, um, green outline, that population is generally being served well. So we looked at the population distribution as well and the density per acre. Um, and you can start to see how that relates to, you know, these white dots being the park, um, and the access to them. So priorities and costs. Um, within the document, there's nearly four hundred different recommended maintenance items or new improvements. Uh, more than ninety percent of these are within the city of Casper. And we would encourage you to think about this over twenty years. Uh, the reality is, is that if you, you know, plan for about a zero to fifteen-year time period, you can probably pull it off maybe in twenty. But then there's going to be things that come up, new priorities, and there's going to be things that fall away. Uh, the trends, you know, if we were to talk about field design, uh, you know, fifteen years ago, uh, the backstop and the lawn would have been acceptable. Now it's, we need synthetic and it needs to be higher-end. So, continue to keep your pulse on what the market is saying, especially as you make those big investments. Large projects, uh, they should be part of a redevelopment or district plan to make sure that you're using them as an economic engine, especially if you're trying to attract individuals from outside of the region. And then, uh, the dollar figures that you see here, these, these, this should be funded through public, private and nonprofit sectors. This is not necessarily a lift directly of just the, uh, citizens of Casper or Evansville, Barnum Mills. Um, there should be a partnership approach and maybe it's a forty, forty, twenty split or a twenty, forty, twenty split, forty split if my math works there. Uh, but nonetheless, the point being is that, you know, when you look at the numbers, um, it's, it, it needs to be, um, a partnership. it's, it, it needs to be a partnership approach. So how did we come up with the prioritization? You'll see this in the doc, there's like seven or eight pages of all the parks, all in schools, of all the projects. First, we considered the public input, you know, those five areas of input that we received early on. And, you know, wanting to make sure that we listen to those individuals who put that effort into providing us direction. Secondly is the strategic direction. You'll see that in the executive summary. That was developed and kind of fine tuned as the project went on. Third, taxpayer return on investment. Does this project serve multiple jurisdictions or is it providing an economic impact? Is it overall helping the community? Quality of life, destination appeal. We wanted to consider, you know, does this create a sports hub? You are centrally located, you're in a great position to pull people in from the region. Highest and best use, you know, just because it, you know, fits doesn't necessarily mean it makes sense. So what is the highest and best use? And you'll see that as we talk about some of the areas where we suggest investing or divesting. Sequence, maybe this is an improvement that is contingent upon something else being done. So that's why it's now five years out or 10 years out. And then capital improvement costs. Resources are limited, you know, will it reduce the operational costs like mowing? So we address that, or are there grants? Grants might actually elevate a project depending on what's out there. And, you know, as we consider the high expectations that the public has, you know, we, we have some work to do there in terms of, you know, how do we fine tune this long term? So when we looked at the sum of all of the improvements, we went through and identified, is this something that is a maintenance project or is this something that is new? And when we say deferred maintenance, what we're talking about is some examples right here. Has it met the useful lifetime, the life expectancy? Similar to a road project, when the road needs to be repaved, it's not a new road. You are maintaining and renewing that roadway. Similar to a park, when a ball field meets the end of its expected lifetime, you're not building a new ball field. You are maintaining the ball field. Other examples is lighting, replacing playgrounds as they meet the end of their lifetime. These are all elements that go into this. These items here, generally speaking, are something new that you don't currently have and you were going on and putting. So when we look at the long term priorities and costs by jurisdiction, in zero to five years, we've identified about 24 million in park improvements. We recognize and realize that that's likely going to bleed out into the five to 10 year range. I know that in talking with Zulima, that you have been very aggressive in pursuing grants and believe that, you know, of that, you know, lift there of 24 million, you know, if half or even less than that is, you know, coming from you, that would be fantastic. We, we want to make it clear that we're not suggesting that this is on the shoulders of the Casper citizens, that it is a collaboration. When we start to look out further than that, it becomes a balancing act, it really does. Because five years priorities might change and you have to adjust. And so the shelf life of these plans is about five years. It doesn't mean you need to redo it. What you do need to do is revisit the prioritization of those improvements to make sure that what the market is saying, what the people are suggesting validates where you're spending your money. Not necessarily, you know, is the trail here or not? Like you'll see in our report, we talk about adding ADA pathways. Well, you need to add the ADA pathway, but you know, is that the priority now or not? That's the community conversation. And then we looked at, you know, where the major investments would take place. Crossroads Park in the report is in North Casper. Certainly are seeing the significant, kind of we'll call it greatest investment. Fort Casper Park, Washington Park, and this is just the top 20. And then again, we looked at, you know, the zero to five year implementation plan and where those, where that breaks down. So last two slides, priorities and costs, the short term action plan. We really believe that you need to evaluate multiple sites for athletics. You can see a few of those on the screen here. Secondly, the Miracle League, looking at designing and constructing that field to accommodate and respond to the grant that you've already received. So that should be a high priority. And some of these are not capital, they are more operational. So there's a balancing act to that. Paradise Valley and Yesness Parks develop park master plans for those. So what we're giving you is a slate, a program of, these are the suggestions. But how you design it or how you engineer it and where it specifically goes or what impacts it may have on utilities and whatnot, that needs to be figured out before you start paying for things. Looking at the park overall from urban forestry, again, we're kind of repeating ourselves here with the natural area turf assessment. One of the things you could consider is when you think about dog parks, Scott mentioned the fees. There should be free dog parks, but maybe there are, and we believe that there are people that are willing to pay for enhanced dog parks. And so having an evaluation of that is something we're recommending. Park lighting, we talked about that. Washington Park, looking at some improvements there. Fort Casper, all the athletic fields, looking at, you know, automating the controllers for irrigation. You're working on that, continue to fine tune that and get that complete. The ice center, we heard from both those that play hockey and those that are passionate about this, that the second sheet of ice needs to happen. And it's our understanding that's darn near, it's getting very close. Paradise Valley, there's trails and a pedestrian bridge that are warranted over there on the west side. Marion Criner Park, you've received grants for this, North Platt, adjacent to Popular Street, you know, having a pedestrian bridge. Meadow and Sage Parks, there's play equipment that needs to be looked at. And so with that, we do have, I'm going to discard though, pull it up here. We do have the report document here and just a few highlights of that. So the cover, we jump in here, here's the executive summary. We outline within there the public engagement approach. And again, appreciate the partnership and the leadership, all of the various stakeholders that either met with individually or responded to our stakeholder specific survey, not the public input survey, but one that was specific for them. Looking at, you know, again, summarizing the last time we were here in terms of public input, market analysis, our assessment of the conditions, the density of the population and how that impacts things. Just going to keep flipping through here. Examples of what you'll see when you look at the park specific recommendations. So we have a spread on the left hand side to talk about the jurisdiction, what we, the classification of the park, how big it is. What the, you'll see a kind of a assessment here of the area. So when we said 251 acres of turf grass, that came from us digitizing your maps to quantify that. We look at, you know, signs and things like that. So just going through here to share kind of what you can expect as you take a deeper dive into it. And there's a lot, I, you know, 30 days is going to go quick. Maybe, you know, maybe we need more than 30 days. I don't know how Zulima feels about that, but. Well, get on Paradise Valley. So all in, I think, you know, we're again, very grateful for the city's leadership on this, the opportunity to help you with this. And appreciate the, the support that this community has and this body has for this effort. And so just, just want to thank you. We appreciate it and we look forward to your questions and the discussion. So with that, I guess Zulima, do you want to come back up and we'll, Scott, hey, team leads as they, as they, as we're asked.
Counselor Sutherland.
Thank you. Thank you just generally for, I mean, so much information. And I feel like it's, it's really cool to, to see this. And especially to know some of the opportunities it sounds like we have. So I guess I'm kind of curious how this, you know, I understand there will be lots of conversations moving forward about how we kind of operationalize this and how we choose among those priorities. But one of the things that, that really stands out to me is both that we have an opportunity to build master plans for a couple of parks with PV and Yesness. And then also that there's that kind of overlaying gap for teen access. So are you, I just questioned specifically like what, I was trying to Google a little bit, like what does a park look like for teens? And it sounds super cool, but do you have specific recommendations? And is that part of the thought process about, you know, with some of these new master plans that are developed, can we incorporate? Like, how do we go about incorporating those gaps and being aware that we're meeting some of those that have been identified in?
Mayor Counselor, thank you. So I have to say, my team has had the benefit of working with these great people for the last 11 months, 10 months. And so a lot of these aha moments are not new for us. And so as soon as we started hearing some of these recommendations, we were glabbing onto things. So I can tell you, Nick Whibs, our rec manager, is already partnering with groups. He's looking at opportunities to offer some of that team programming where we recognize that there's a gap in service to that community. We are, we are already exploring how we can add programming to benefit seniors, for instance. And so we're already kind of running with it, but you are correct. We have to be strategic. Sometimes I struggle to put on the brake and prioritize and this plan will help us with that. But we will just systematically start dissecting what are the priorities and how can we best serve with the resources that we have available to us and, and implement as we can.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Question for city staff, we're going to get all of this and information back in next week, I think, or something like that?
Mayor Counselor, so the presentation and the full report will be provided in the info packet on Friday, but it will publish online tomorrow on our website at plainatrona.org or casperareaaparksplan.com.
Thank you. And sort of in addition to Counselor Sutherland's questions or comments, I know coming up on the agenda, we'll be talking about Buckboard Park, we'll be talking about Veterans Park. And so I was wondering how we go about holding those conversations into this. You know, I think the next conversation is going to be Buckboard Park next week in our pre meeting. And so before we make any decisions about what to do about Buckboard Park, I guess I'm just curious, how do we make sure that we're taking those conversations holistically and always referring back to this master plan? How do you see that playing out over the next couple of months?
Mayor Counselor, so, you know, specifically with the conversation about Buckboard, we know that council has fielded, as has staff, concerns about the safety of the park and some of the shortfalls potentially. And, and it is our opportunity, now that we have this body of work completed, to say, okay, these are the needs at these individual parks, but how do they fall in the priority? And can, can we implement portions to make improvements that make sense without necessarily implementing every recommendation for that particular park? And so when we start talking about Buckboard, you'll, you will note, okay, the consultants have said, you really need to do a park by park lighting analysis and then determine, you know, what the appropriate level of lighting is for that particular classification of park and then implement some improvements if needed, you know, park by park. And certainly we could look at prioritizing those lighting improvements. Example, based on the areas of highest need, you know, we're going to be pulling data on our maintenance. We're going to be pulling data on, you know, police reports and what kind of activity is happening in those areas that will help us to inform how we prioritize. With our Veterans Park discussion, for instance, to me, now we know what the recommendation is, which is ultimately to move Veterans Park to City Park. And so now it's time to reengage our veteran groups and our stakeholders and say, okay, this is the recommendation, how do we make this happen? Because it can't be just a city lift, we all need to work together. If this is the vision that we want to see come to fruition.
Counselor Bond.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to get too down the weeds, but just I had just some specific questions about some of the priorities on the action plan. And I know those are just initial priorities, but. So on the Marion Criner, mostly just because I'm kind of curious, by removing the playground, is that because there are other adjacent or nearby playgrounds that are available and it's not really in demand or?
Mayor Counselor.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So right across the street is Matthew Campfield Park. That has a number of playgrounds that are geared towards different age groups.
Yeah.
And are in much better condition than the one in Marion Criner Park. And so again, implementing some of the recommendations to diversify the offerings. We actually believe that by combining Matt Campfield and Marion Criner, then you have aquatics, you have a pump trasher, you have a skate park, and you have Matthew Campfield with basketball playground, playgrounds, all the shelters or shoes. You know, you're, you're really activating a whole hub area of recreation within that community where people can gather and enjoy being together. And the pool, of course.
Okay, thank you. And then on the, this, this was just a question I had actually today from a resident of the city, asking about, about outdoor basketball courts. And I know it's larger, I'm kind of thinking back to the, you know, the drop in basketball. Does that still happen in the, in the wintertime? The, the drop in basketball in the gyms, in gyms?
Mayor Counselor, yes, absolutely. We have a very active drop in program at the Casper Rec Center.
Yeah.
So yes, that happens all through the wintertime, every morning, in fact, I believe.
Yeah.
So in addition to that.
No evening, are there any evening ones for drop in?
So with drop in basketball, on average per day, we've got about five hours at the rec center available for that. Usually evening hours are leagues, so drop in usually happens in the morning and then early afternoon and after school to accommodate for some of the kiddos before we start leagues in the evening.
I see. Well, I noticed on that national data you presented that basketball participation was, was down. But I know we used to have quite a pretty active drop in basketball program in the school gyms that I think city rec ran. So I didn't know if maybe the demand had diminished or what. But anyways, specifically the question was about outdoor basketball. So I don't know if that, if it didn't come out as a desire in this, in the survey data or if it's just not a summertime issue. I know there's one outdoor, I think, one outdoor basketball court in North Casper. But I don't know if there are others at other city parks. But that was kind of the impression that this person had was that that was kind of the only outdoor basketball court. And was there a need for other outdoor basketball courts?
Mayor Counselor, I'm going to, I'm going to try to answer your question in two parts and then I'm going to defer to the experts a little bit.
Okay.
Or to people who need to correct me if I misspeak. So with regard to the district program, I'm not sure that we ever did a drop in program necessarily, but we do program the fifth and sixth grade.
Yeah.
Volleyball and basketball.
Yeah.
No, fourth.
Well, then.
Fourth, excuse me, fourth, fifth grade.
This was open to the public. It wasn't school age children necessarily. This would be like adolescents and adults.
Okay, I am not aware of that programming with the district. We do have the honor of having Mr. Elbogen here. He's, he wants to address some specific school district stuff, but, but we do program for their fourth and fifth program through the schools.
Yeah.
And we do utilize school gyms and then they play their games at the recreation center on the weekends.
Okay.
In terms of outdoor basketball, you are correct. City of Casper Parks proper only have a number of facilities that have outdoor basketball courts. However, a number of our schools also have outdoor basketball courts that are open to the public when the school is not in session.
Sure.
And so again, I'm going to defer though to Scott and his analysis because he did not feel on a local level, considering our trends and utilization that we needed to expand outdoor basketball.
Again, thank you, Mayor Counselors. From, as Zulima mentioned, is from a, from a standpoint, we, the number of outdoor basketball courts is appropriate. The, the trends that we're seeing nationally is that people are wanting to go indoor. And so the number of courts being developed outdoors has diminished. And so what we've seen trend wise over the past 10 years is the, the service level has, has changed. So there, there, you know, less courts per population than what there once were. That's not to say that there aren't needed in particular areas and certain communities. As Ryan mentioned, and you know, part of the challenge is, you know, it's not only number of facilities, it's distribution of those as well. And so I think that may be part of the consideration.
Okay. And then just one last thing real quick is I, I noticed that the shooting complex is not on this list. Was it, is that because it's being dealt with otherwise? Or, and I know we have a, there's an operator contract, but it's still a city owned facility. Is that being considered elsewhere for improvements or?
Mayor Counselor, so shooting. shooting sports were outside of the scope of this project. Um, you know, broadly speaking, it, it falls under outdoor recreation and we've noted that there's opportunity to expand in that area. Um, and so we have Stuckenhoff, which is city owned property operated by the Casper Shooters Club. We also have the Skeet Range, which is operated by, um, Skeet Club. And so, uh, certainly we are working with those groups to identify opportunities for enhancements and try to, you know, establish master plans and funding sources and, and, uh, execute some improvements there too. But that was outside of the scope of this bigger, you know, more perk focused plan.
Okay, thank you so much. And, and again, thank you for the report and amazing report and, and very, very, uh, informative. Thank you for doing that.
Councillor Sullivan.
Thanks. Um, I just had one other specific question and or comment. Um, I really like the suggestion to benefit from elementary playgrounds that are nearby. Um, I've twice this year tried to take my kids to elementary school playgrounds and they're locked down. Um, you can't get into them. So I don't know. Um, but clearly it says right there, this is public outside of school hours. Um, actually last night that happened. So I just, I'm not sure what we need to do, but I think we do need to do something because, um, yeah, I mean, some of those assets are just not accessible to the community, um, right now. If, if they're locked down. So got to make sure. I don't know who, I mentioned this to you earlier, I think at one point, but, um, and I mean, that's some, the conversation we have with the district, but I think it's important to raise.
Just to make sure that you're still there, uh, councillor Pollock, do you have anything?
I am here, but, um, I don't have anything to add at the moment.
Okay. And how about you, councillor Jensen?
Yep, still here, listening.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure you were both still awake. So thank you for responding. I guess, do we have any other questions? We thank you for the information and the input and, uh, we will be digesting the full report and, uh, yeah. Come back next week and we'll have 20,000 questions for you. So we do appreciate it. Thank you very much. And it looks like there's been a lot of work and, uh, I'm glad to see your staff is already trying to work towards these things and, uh, it looks like your staff gets a glowing review basically for what we've got. So, uh, we want to pass on a thank you to you folks as well. We do appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Can I ask real quickly?
Yeah.
After, are we going to see you again? Or, um, are we going to rely on Zulema and actually Jared next to Harris Ford?
Mayor, councillor, um, I would say me primarily, but I will definitely be calling on the experts. They not, they have not planned another trip out.
Thank you.
Doesn't mean we can't make it.
Very good.
And I, I just want to add that these, this exceptional team of people have been, you know, chasing a moving target uh, last 10 months because we've been changing staff structures. We have been changing, you know, I mean, we've gone after grants to do projects and, and constant change has been the word of the day. And so, um, you know, kudos to them for, for bearing with us, for being patient, for pivoting when we've made changes and the impact their recommendations. Um, and so again, just really grateful for their work.
Mr. City Manager, I think, did you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I too appreciate all the information, the discussion and so forth, but what I'm hoping we can do is uh, crystallize a little further what it is that council would like to see moving forward. Certainly, I think we've gotten a lot of data as it relates to capital planning and so on, moving into our, um, you know, out years and, and so on. Um, and, and maybe there is a recommendation or two that would suggest where we go from here. But my hope is that this can be a, a compendium reference resource for the council to consider, build plans around and have further discussions about, particularly with respect to a number of the individual recommendations that you see here. Uh, but if council has other corrections or other needs along those lines, I'd be happy to entertain that now or, or when it is that we can visit about that in the future, the near future.
Yeah, I would, I'll throw out an idea, but I think that probably what we're kind of looking for is we wound up with the facilities assessment dropped on us and staff then at that point said, okay, we can do and, and kind of put together a timeline looking at budget and severity, safety needs, uh, et cetera, et cetera. And I would think that that's probably where we should go with this plan. Uh, any other ideas or views?
I think that we need to probably focus on what is underserved. So, you know, just thinking like a teen adventure park kind of a thing. And the first thing that's coming to my mind is Marad Park seems to be kind of a good park for that, something for the underserved. So, so things that we don't already have. I really like the enhanced dog parks. If you had a dog park with splash pads or whatever else that you could charge. You know, that might be a great idea to utilize maybe some of these parks that are not already being used, that we can throw something like that in. So, so I do think that some of those ideas that maybe can help generate some money, but also help with the underserved pieces that we don't have is, I guess, my thought of it is just, um, and then maybe we could work with the senior center also to see what we could do for the seniors. I just don't feel like, I, I guess, the duplication of things. We have a lot of certain things, but we have nothing of other things is, I guess, where I'm at.
Councillor Ginnon.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, patience is a virtue and we'll get the chance to see the report tomorrow. It sounds like when it's published, but my understanding is that uh, your team had come up with kind of recommendations for each amenity or asset based on kind of the general overall recommendations you presented, presenting in the executive summary. Is that a fair assumption that each asset amenity will have some kind of general recommendations that fold into the overall philosophy?
Yes.
Well, I am anxious to looking forward to that. I imagine we'll have lots of questions afterwards, but. Take it up for.
So what direction do you want to give to staff?
And I personally would like the opportunity to see the report before I, you know, that's where I'm feeling, uh, but happy to entertain other suggestions.
I know they're looking for something.
Arthur Mayor, uh, certainly I think, uh, that, that's a reasonable point. Um, and, uh, given that there could be a myriad of directions that council will want to go. Um, sorry about that. I'm putting a bit of eye. And that's understandable. Uh, what, what I would suggest, particularly for those that are continuing on into the new, the new council, um, and I realize that will be determined still for some of you, um, this, this could be really good information along with the facilities assessment to build your council goals with. Um, and i- if indeed you all do want to talk more about sustainability moving into the future with the new council, some great ideas here with that as well that I would encourage you to look at, uh, with that lens as you go over this report. Um, undoubtedly, a number of these things are going to generate a lot of public discussion as we talked about at the very, very beginning of this presentation. And I think that's great. Um, uh, because that's an important part of this process too, that, that we don't, you know, haven't fully, uh, explored as well, even though we got a lot of public input with regard to the recommendation that you do have in front of you. So a lot of ways we can go, we certainly don't have to have definitive answers today. But, but if there are things that you need by way of more homework and so on, please be thinking about that and we're prepared to, uh, to help.
Councillor Sullivan.
Thanks. Um, I will not be one of those people carrying on, but, um, were I to be, I, I think there was a bullet in there in, on one of the slides that talks first and foremost about setting up a philosophy, I can't remember what word you used, a philosophy, park philosophy or a
programming.
Programming philosophy. Um, that sounds like a great idea and is aligned with what you were talking about in terms of council goals. Um, I mean, it seems to me like diversifying the assets that are available. Um, and then Lisa, I just completely agreed with you in terms of, you know, seeing in that diversity, how we can reach some of these groups of people who, who seem to be underserved, considering the breadth of park space that we have available just seems like a really great opportunity. Um, and then I was just going to say, I lived in a community that had that two tiered dog park system and it was awesome. Um, it just like so nice to have like a grassy area to take your cup and, you know, like a there's like a diving board into the pond and, you know, just like fun things that can be done. So, um, it just seems like having maybe in terms of what staff could do, I just wonder about those kind of broader philosophical ideas, um, helping guide some of the decision making. That could be really helpful, especially with just such a huge amount of information coming our way.
Councillor Pacheco.
Thank you. My only suggestion would be is to, um, go ahead and, and support what the mayor is saying about giving this, this, the council to bring back some of the information. It'll give us time for us to review the document, go through that information, but giving some latitude for the staff to kind of come back and give us some feedback, budget, all those types of things. That's my recommendation. I think we can kind of parcel and say little things that we want out of this. I think that's going to be down the road. But I think the 30,000 foot view right now is for us as a council to give direction to the count of the staff to say, do your due diligence, bring it back to us and let us look at it after we get to digest it. Then we can ask more questions and that's my suggestion.
No problem. And in light of that comment, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, council can at the very, very least expect a formal sort of adoption motion coming forward here in the near future to, uh, to, to formally adopt the, the body of work, which we will be asking for as well among the other agencies that participated, which I, I want to say I'm very grateful for their partnerships that made this happen. Uh, as you will note, there's a lot of recommendations about their facilities as well. Um, and, uh, and we will, we'll go forward from there. And thank you for your initial thoughts. I appreciate that.
Is that okay with everybody? Very good.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You betcha. Thank you. Thank you, folks, for coming to town. Uh, have you put, put a fly in the water yet?
No.
Oh, man. Have you hiked the mountain?
Oh, I did. So.
Okay.
Yeah, last night in the dark.
Just wanted to check and make sure that we were getting our amenities used. So we do thank you and we do appreciate all the work and the hard work over the last year that you folks, Salima, your staff, everybody has put into this. This is a, a wonderful plan and document as we move forward. We thank you. I guess the next thing, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
That's me. It's been a long day. This is the two long doctor's presentations today and now these. It's just kind of I guess our next would is the annexation request.
Yes, sir.
Do you have something that you wanted to start off with on this?
Yes, I do, Your Honor. Thank you. Um, we have the rather unique request of, um, of a, of a landowner here in our community. Thanks, gentlemen. Uh, to, to actually deannex from the, uh, the city limits of Casper. And, and I say that because, you know, I'm, I'm really not familiar with a lot of these kinds of actions taking place around Wyoming. Certainly not here in Casper, particularly as it relates to what was originally posed as a subdivision plat that was filed with the city and and the council, some of you on council recall the, the, uh, the very thorough conversation we had about some of the ordinance requirements as it relates to that, uh, subdivision and that plat uh, that, uh, uh, council supported a, a number of years ago. Situations and circumstances have changed that are, uh, bringing this, the, the, you know, sort of the impetus, if you will, for the request that's in front of you tonight. Um, namely, the owner has decided to abandon plans for a neighborhood, a residential development, a subdivision development. And instead has decided to replat that property into one large 30 acre parcel that will at some point in the future be the home to a very limited commercial, uh, application, a commercial development. Um, thereby, uh, not necessitating access to utilities that were initially envisioned. Uh, access to streets and roads that were initially envisioned. Um, a dramatic turn, if you will, with regard to how this property would, uh, would be used into the future. Um, council is aware that as a part of the deannexation process, a number of things would need to take place on the part of the petitioner to make happen. Um, as well as a visit with the county commissioners who will review said uses and potentially have with regard to their planning and zoning requirements, uh, some, you know, requests and so on, that they would like to see with this property coming into the county potentially and out of the city limits of Casper. Uh, I, it's important to note and I appreciate the city attorney's point, uh, as you saw in your memo. They don't however, meaning the county commission, have the authority and power statutorily to veto said the annexation. So this, this question really resides on a lot of what your view is and, uh, what the owner is willing to commit to as it relates to some of the ordinance requirements that are, that are in play. As far as, you know, my perspective on this, on this, uh, request, I would say that given the fact that, um, that the owner has decided to shift gears and a subdivision is not in the future, uh, then, then I have a lot less heartburn with regard to a proposal of this nature than I would if indeed this was going to continue to be in a residential neighborhood. That would have a lot of financial impact on us that I would say ordinarily wouldn't be of interest, at, at least in terms of what I would advocate for. Given that that's not the case anymore, I would say it, it's just not as critical of an issue for, you know, for my perspective, being too worried about, particularly if the property owner is willing to, to do the things that are listed in your memo. Uh, secondly, um, pertaining to the, the, uh, the fact that, uh, the commercial impact that the, uh, petitioner is anticipating, I just don't see that being a huge impact to the adjoining neighborhood either. And, uh, and therefore, you know, I don't see a whole lot of, of, of problem. Furthermore, the owner has agreed that if indeed his plans were to shift again in the future and he does decide to re-subdivide and reconsider a, a, a plat that would look more like a neighborhood and subdivision and so on. He agrees that re-annexing would be in the cards and the appropriate thing to do. So with that, uh, our hope was that we could get some discussion pertaining to your view as, uh, as to a potential outcome for this subject area. Mr. Brower is prepared to talk about some of the, uh, requirements that, that we would hope to see on the part of the owner and the petitioner and, uh, answer any questions that you might have pertaining to a, a, a direction that you would anticipate at least provisionally uh, at this point in the, uh, process.
Should we have Mr. Brower?
If it's your pleasure, Your Honor, please.
That'll keep, yep. Mr. Brower.
Mayor, members of the council, um, good evening and thanks for this opportunity. Um, I just wanted to get, we've worked closely with community development and also with the city engineering department to identify, uh, what would be required to deannex. I think it's important, uh, to reemphasize what the city manager stated, and that is that deannexation is not that common. You know, uh, in discussing that with, uh, with Craig Collins. You know, uh, in discussing that with, uh, with Craig Collins today, uh, he recalled that he only remembered one deannexation in his whole career here. So they're, they're just not, um, all that common. And so we've identified that, uh, you know, this thirty-one and a half acre parcel. We've, we went through and just said, hey, step by step, whatever, what are our areas of concern if we deannex it? And on page two of that memo that was provided, uh, we give you a list of seven items and I just kind of want to some summarize those. Um, upon deannexation, the subject property wouldn't be eligible for public utilities for water and sewer. You know, one of our conditions, if you're contiguous to the city, if you want to connect to water and sewer, is to either annex or sign a commitment to annex. So if it is deannexed, they would not have the access to, uh, city water and sewer. The second thing is, is that all the existing utilities, which primarily is just water, would need to be terminated. Uh, at the city limits. So basically, we'd need to terminate the water line at the city limits. And again, if there was. It may require looping of the water line, but again, I don't, I don't believe that that should be on the person that is deannexing. To me, that would be if the city deemed that we needed to loop that water line because it wasn't needed any further. Then again, we would address that. Again, I don't see that as a big issue. Uh, that water line is only about a hundred and forty feet in length, roughly. And then ultimately to deannex, there's a, there's a couple of options. Um, as the city manager stated, they could replat this property into one single lot. Uh, and then they could deannex. The second option would be to just vacate the whole subdivision. In which it would just be unplatted county property at the time it was, it was, uh, deannexed. And the third option would be to provide an easement, um, for access to those those future lots. And again, I don't, based upon what the property owner has stated, I don't think that third option is really even even for consideration, but there's some options. If didn't want to go through the plating process and the cost there, um, that if you just vacate the plat. That doesn't require extensive surveying or or replating process. The other concern is Moose Street, because Moose Street then would stop where the city limits stop. And it's right, it's very close to a hundred and fifty feet in length. If it was a hundred and fifty feet or longer, we need to make sure we provide for a cul-de-sac. Or a hammerhead turnaround for fire protection in order to turn around. So we may need to require, you know, an easement at that end of that property. So we could provide for that cul-de-sac or that turnaround. And then the owner would be, uh, required to provide engineering that's required for whatever grading is necessary. To make sure that we don't have sediment, silt, and things flowing onto our city street from the adjacent subdivision. And so that that isn't tracked from the access there. So again, this typically isn't a big issue. Where a city meets county, and even if there's a gravel road, you know, it's, it's not, not a huge issue. And we just want to make sure that we don't have, uh, a drainage ditch there that is going to convey, you know, silt onto our city street or into our storm sewer system. And, um, that the owner will need to provide all the necessary exhibit surveys, easements and public notices. So to address those items that we identified for the deannexation, whether it's, you know, a replat or whatever, just we need to make sure that we. We verify and have all the surveying necessary. The final item that was mentioned is it kind of becomes a chicken and egg or the old game where you're trading. Trading things back and forth, and that is, we believe that it's probably in the best interest of the city to have some sort of an, an agreement or an MOU. Uh, with the, the property owner to ensure that these items get completed. Because again, we've got the deannexation process and then we have these items that we need to make sure that that are memorialized. And so we think it's important to document those, uh, conditions that are identified in the six items above. In what would be a fairly simple, uh, MOU or an agreement between the city and the deannexing property owner. So with that, I haven't addressed any questions that you may have, or if I didn't cover everything for the city manager, I'd be glad to to address any other questions that are present.
Questions from council. Which one was that? Was that Amber or?
Amber.
Jenna.
It's Amber.
Go ahead, Amber.
Okay, thank you. Um, Carter, you mentioned that, um, there was some. Proposition for a limited commercial application there, so, um, the memo states that we would not. Be collecting then sales or property tax, um, for the city if we deannex. You're anticipating that to not be a particularly significant, uh, loss of potential revenue for the city. Is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, counselor, I think your, your assessment is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Counselor Bond.
Um, so. You mentioned in the, in the report about, uh, or in your, in your conversation or discussion, Tom, about the Moose Street easement. Um, and and I guess this kind of relates to my other question about, so that land to the west of that. Of that subdivision, that's county property now, but is, it sounds like there's a, there is a potential. In the future for that to be subdivided, depending on who the owner is and. Is there some potential there that that area could be annexed? And so in that case. It, um, is it to our advantage, to the city's advantage to maintain an easement on Moose Street? Is that what you're saying? There, there would, there would continue to be easement on, on Moose Street even after the deannexation?
Mayor, uh, Counselor Bond. The only reason the easement on Moose Street would be required is if there was going to continue to be six lots in the subdivision.
Yeah.
And so it would just be to provide access. That easement does not really serve any purpose for the city of Casper per se. It's just to provide access to those six lots. Based upon what the city manager provided, I do not believe that that is an issue that is at hand right now. And again, that would just be. No, I do not. If it's one single lot.
Yeah.
There is no need.
Yeah.
For a Moose Street easement.
Sure. Um, so if, and and again, I don't. They mean to have it getting the cart before the horse in terms of that property to the west. Again, that's county property, but if it were to be subdivided and. That that owner did want to go for annexation, but that, some of that property. Off of, you know, just off of Moose Street. Would we have to reapply for easement or is it, how's that work? I mean, does that, does Moose Street stay? Does that become part of the? That, that plot of land that belongs to the county now or how, how does that work?
Mr. Mayor, if I could maybe respond, uh, counselor, I think, I think this really, your, your question ties into kind of the process that we have to engage in. So just to be clear, at this point, there's no formal request for deannexation. And so that's what, what spurs the, the process. And and once that. Formal request is given to the city, there's an obligation that'd also be given to the county. And then the county has sixty days. To prepare a study of what the impacts would be. And so, um, the statute does. Talk about any public access easements that, that the city might have. I mean, they can be vacated, they can be retained, they can be then taken over by the county. And so I think there's a number of ways. We look at the concerns that are listed, um, in the memo to address that, either through an MOU with. Uh, the, uh, part of this deannexing, uh, potentially, um, through the county's, um, uh. Adoption of rules and regulations to govern the property once it's back into the county. Um, I think what you're contemplating is if that land to the west were then to be subdivided and then built out. How does that affect connectivity? What I would say is, you know, it's hard to really say because we don't know hypothetically what a developer might want to do. But I think as part of that county planning process, they would have to account for ingress and egress. And and of course, it would be outside of the city. Um, so it would be up to the, to the county, uh, the commissioners ultimately to make those determinations. But because of the continuity with municipal boundary, we certainly have an opportunity to weigh in. So, um, if you want to go too far down that road. You just don't know, but I think those would be, that there would be processes to deal with.
Okay, okay. So that, yeah, this, I mean, the memo said that the owner had requested deannexation. But that, that's not a formal request?
There hasn't been a formal request. I mean, this is, and to be clear, I think what the request from councils is this something. Um, theoretically that you guys would, would consider. If so, I don't want to speak for, for, uh. Uh, Mr. Morgan, but I think, um, if, if it is, then then I would expect we would see a formal request and that would start the formal. Process. This is almost a pre-process discussion.
Okay.
Basically, I understand it that basically if we said no way, no how, are we going to deannex? Then that pretty well answers the question. If we say yes, we will. Then Mr. Morgan can go ahead and work with staff to get an MOU of following the seven steps and we go on. Is that kind of?
Mr. Mayor, counselor, I, I think that's, that's accurate. There's no point in spending time and money to, to prepare something if out of the gate, council's.
If we say no.
Yes.
So at this point, is council okay with going ahead with the deannexation and, uh. Adopting the MOU as long as these seven, uh. Criteria that are listed in our memo are followed through on.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Um, maybe Carter or somebody who was, um. On council with me, I think this request came up in twenty twenty, though maybe I wasn't yet on council, but. Um, initially, there was a request for this, um, deannexation in twenty twenty, if I'm understanding correctly. Can I get a little more context from some folks about what the rationale at that time was, um, to, to reject the deannexation?
Mr. City Manager.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, counselor, I certainly can, uh, having been around back then, um. The, the basic idea was, uh, again, a, a deannexation request. And the difference, as I recall, was. That the, the subdivision concept was still in play. And therefore marked a different, uh, circumstance than what you have in front of you today. Um, there, there, there is no subdivision in play, there is no neighborhood in play, therefore. The sales tax implications that we would otherwise be, uh, positively benefited by would not be lost. And so, uh, from that standpoint alone, um, my view and feeling about it is different than it was. Back in twenty twenty or twenty nineteen, whatever that was that they came toward.
Counselor Sutherland. Oh, you bet. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off there, Amber. Counselor Sutherland.
Um, I might, I, I'm feeling a little dense on this. Um, I guess I'm just missing the why. Like, what, what's the point of the deannexation? Um, it, and any, the memo's really detailed. On, on what we would require, um, but unlike most of our memos, we don't have a recommendation in here. So I just, I feel like I'm missing some context and I don't. Um, I don't know that I fully appreciate the, the longer term. Potential consequences or benefits of, you know, a decision in favor of annexing the property is. So I don't know, is it possible to get more information on why, why this question's being asked?
Mr. Mayor, uh, counselor, uh, I, I cannot speak to the motivations of the petitioner and the owner. Mr. Morgan happens to be here tonight, as you all know, and he can probably address that better than I. But in terms of, uh, what I'm willing to advocate for, to be clear, I am advocating that. Moving forward with a deannexation of this nature and this specificity is, is. In my opinion, not of harmful effect to the city of Casper. We're in a neighborhood and we're at one, uh, a, a development that would potentially garner us. Sales tax proceeds because of the people that would be moving there and so on. My recommendation, I haven't seen, would be given. Uh, but we're talking about a limited commercial application. That while will be good for the county and good to have going in, in our midst. Does not necessarily yield immediate financial benefit to the city, being in the limits of the city of Casper. Um, but again, as to the motivations with respect to what the owner would like to see, I, I really can't represent.
Counselor Pacheco.
Yeah, I, I heard everything and and I, from Tom and and Carter has, is comfortable with it and our city attorney. Seemed to be comfortable with it. I'm fine with doing that and moving forward with it. Um, I don't have any, any heartburn around, especially if Carter's not seeing any major issues with it. So I feel comfortable with it. That's where I'm at.
Counselor Gamros.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. One question and then, well, potentially two questions. Um, looking at an aerial view, it looks like Moose Street is paved all the way, I mean, quite a. Great deal longer, you know, to the south of that neighborhood. I was just curious if there was reason why.
Mr. Mayor, counselor, thank you for that question. Um. You know, years and years ago, when the city owned this property, it was envisioned that that property would be. A site for sort of a satellite cemetery, uh, space. Probably six years ago, the city decided. That that space would not be appropriate as, as for use as a cemetery. And given the topography that exists over there, I can understand why that, that would make sense. But somewhere in the, in the point of the city's ownership, Moose was paved to a certain extent of the easement. Um, i- if you were to go out there on foot, however, and look at the condition of the pavement that exists now. Um, you know, it, it would not be one of those pavement sections that you think is in good working order. And and not in need of some attention. Because it's been a long time since we've done any work on that aspect of Moose. The rest of Moose and Wolf Creek, however, different story, relatively good shape, certainly good for residential standards and use. But that portion that extends into the old property that the city used to own, uh, not so much.
Thank you. Um, kind of a shame that the road was built and then just kind of left to weather and die. Uh, return to the elements, uh, uh, might have jumped, jumped the gun on that one, I suppose, but, um. I, it, it's always a shame when I see people in the audience that we don't get to hear from them. So I'd be curious, since we do have the owner. And if the owner is willing, I would love to hear what the intent is for the area, just so that I can feel as fully informed as possible, so.
Well, we could have him come down. The reason I hadn't asked him was I didn't feel like, as long as it was a viable business. That he should have a business plan. And it's really none of our business to delve into that. From a private business owner's standpoint, is that I have no business trying to regulate. A personals, a person's business as long as it is a legal business. But if council wants to, we can go ahead and do that.
That's where I'm leaning unless council, uh, the city manager has additional.
No, uh, Your Honor, I, I, I really don't. I, I think Mr. Morgan will be happy to visit with you. Um, and, and, and maybe be willing to share some of his plan.
Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor, Counselor. Um, I wasn't sure the format of the meeting tonight. I was prepared to give a presentation and I would definitely uncover, um, all of your questions, uh, kind of where I'm at and. And, uh, most importantly, the why. So to get to that point, the why, since that is a paved surface. It is part of city inventory. And now that I'm the sole owner of, um, Gorgon, that includes this, uh, subdivision. Of course, in this land, uh, you know, just honestly, I think it's a waste of taxpayer money. That you would have to resurface that, that road in particular, um, especially. I'm only planning on using it to put up a shed and then perhaps landscape it, get some grading done. And then at the very end of the property, there would be, um, like a wedding ceremony type venue, um, not. To encompass the whole, you know, receptions and things like that, but just the venue itself. Uh, I'm not sure if you had the opportunity to check out the land itself, but if you're up on top, you have just a perfect panoramic view of. You know, why we live here, which is Casper Mountain. You can even see the river over by Robertson Road. And then you even see downtown. Which is, um, phenomenal. So if you're looking around town, you see wedding venues, um, and you still want to take part in that. That kind of rustic atmosphere, um, kind of like in the prairie type thing, you know, you still have, uh, cell phone. Reception, um, and then more importantly, a safe ride instead of going, you know, towards the lake or. Under the mountain and things like that. So you, you, you get the best of both worlds. So that's where I'm at. I just, uh, being the only owner. Honestly, I'd like to see the, the money put somewhere else, so. I, I think that, I don't know, I don't know if there's another question earlier, if there's only three hundred feet that actually touch city limits. Apart from that, um. Uh, Counselor Bond, uh, that's part of a two hundred and forty-six acre ranch. And I don't see that ranch subdividing. They did help out the church and the community. And I don't see that ranch subdividing. They did help out the church and the community or in, in that neighborhood specifically and, uh, allowed them to buy some land from them so they could extend their parking lot and things like that. But, you know, it's, it's two landowners, Wolf Creek Ranch, 240 plus acres, um, Gorgon, uh, that 30 acre plus. And then the, uh, state land that's on the other side of that. So that whole entire region is just 300 feet touching city limits. So that's, that's, uh, where the rest comes from.
Did you have a couple of comments?
Jesse, uh, for the context. Uh, so is it fair to say that at some point in the future, you'll potentially be, uh, coming back to the city to re-annex, to establish, uh, a public road at that time? Do you see that as, uh, an aspect of it at some point in the future? If not, um, you know, in the near term?
Um, you know, no, not at all. If, if it were to go towards a de-annexation, you know, I just see that as just a long driveway, the same, um, that you see extended into Wolf Creek Ranch that goes up, uh, Wolf Creek Road. Um, you know, that ends right there. And, um, you know, that, that's basically it. And but what that road is served for is for people to drive on and, and to use to get from point A to point B. If you go on that road, you know, what, where's the development going to go? You know, is, is the ranch going to sell? I, I wouldn't imagine so. There's still heirs to, to the people that, that live there. Um, so I, I can't speak to that, but the topography of the land itself, there's not a lot of use and it's almost impossible to ex- extend, you know, I guess subdivisions in that area. And then if you're talking about that empty lot that's still tied to there, there's also two different access points um, into there, uh, over by the church, right next to there, there's a dead end, if, um, depending what future developers would, would do. And then, um, one block away on Pluma Drive, I believe, is, uh, another access apart from Moose to get into that specific area.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Any other questions from anybody? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
So I'll go back to the other question. Are we ready to go ahead and, uh, go for the de-annexation and the MOU per the memo? Do we have a couple of thumbs there on the video?
Yep, I'm good.
Saying yes, I vote yes.
Very good. Thank you, ladies. I appreciate it. Sounds like, uh, we're go for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Council goal update?
Thank you. Uh, this is the opportunity that, uh, we have to, uh, review with you the accomplishment of one of your goals, um, of the current seated council. And as you might imagine, we're, we're wrapping up a number of those. And so you're going to hear conversations like this as we get closer to the end of the year, to sort of return and report to you as, uh, as it relates to some of your directions and goals and, and, uh, objectives. Tonight, you get the opportunity to meet PART, uh, the Public Art Response Team. And, uh, uh, from, from, from my standpoint, it's, it's a pretty exciting and interesting development as it relates to the ways in which we can facilitate, um, the donation of public art, the, uh, the purchase of public art by the council, commission of public art, and, and so on, to hopefully encourage the, uh, propagation of public art within the community to, to work towards your, your, uh, goal of livability. Um, pursuant to that then, I, I'd like to turn the time over to members of the PART and have them walk through some of the elements of the, uh, of the policy that they're presenting and, and, uh, and what it is, and hopefully you will find it being consistent with the accomplishment of this particular goal.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. That was outstanding. Mr. Mayor and Counsel, as the city manager said, we are going to start profiling and giving updates on several of our goals. So tonight we're kicking off with the public art goal. And again, as the city manager said, we, uh, took, took the challenge and the, really the action steps that you had asked us to look at, accepting, um, truly, um, finding ways to maintain and how to fund these projects. So we broke it into several action steps. They are profiled quite in detail in your council memo. So we would direct your attention to the, really the second page that identifies the letters. And I'll kick off and then Zulema's going to tag in and we'll be kind of back and forth and Eric's got a part two. So we're your PART team. So one of the first things was to figure out how to, uh, organize, uh, really how we want to respond to any requests that we get, and we do get them for public art and, and they come to you. But we would like to, um, create again this response team, not only of city staff, but we're seeking tonight direction from you, um, that we would like to have, um, a council representative, one or more as part of the PART team. So we can come back to that after we finish our presentation this evening. We will also be, um, seeking some direction as we move forward on some future, um, pieces. But that is one that we want to kick off with is to have you join the team and Tom Brower is also a member of the PART team, as you saw in the memo name. So that's step one.
Okay, following along, B, so the PARC division is working on an inventory of all the public art, uh, that exists in the community today. So a, a little caveat to that is, of course, we have a, a number of sculptures and monuments on city-owned property. Most of the murals, however, are not on city-owned property. And so while we will be identifying the location of murals that are put up for public consumption, um, it will be important to note that they are not necessarily on public property and so may not be within our purview to, um, to make changes to or worry about maintenance to or those kinds of things. And so, um, our IT division was, um, instrumental in developing a platform that we could go and inventory add certain, uh, important features, uh, photographs of each of the pieces or murals and, um, and, and then we can put it in a map form and see what the distribution of public art is throughout the community. That I believe will help us to determine where it may be appropriate to put additional arts installations, whether we commission those ourselves or people request donations. And so, um, I think just having a geographic representation where all the public art is will help us to inform decisions later on.
Letter C talks about how we plan to maintain the public art. And so we discussed as a group, um, the desire to establish an endowment. We did research into private endowments out, actually out there, not only through the Wyoming Arts Council, but also through the Wyoming Community Foundation. Those private foundations do see, um, investment of their revenues into equities. And so working with Jill, um, and really talking with Jill Johnson about what we can do with the city. Uh, according to our statutes, we're not allowed to invest into equities at this time. So what Jill has, uh, recommended, and we are recommending that to you, is to, um, keep this in-house with our endowment and the finance department, along with the finance revenue team of council members would oversee that. It would be a separate fund. And again, we would only be using, um, the, you know, truly the interest off the corpus. And I think many of us who set off foundations recognize what we can use off our endowments for the maintenance. And again, as you'll see in, in our recap here, we're going to try to, uh, handle each piece of art with a different case-by-case basis because a bronze might be a different level of maintenance requirement. Uh, we might have some large, large pieces versus some smaller pieces. So truly the maintenance requirement will differ. And again, we want to reach, um, out to some other comparable areas that have looked at endowments. But we will be kind of looking at a percentage of the project value that we will be recommending then in the agreement with the art donation that would be put into the foundate, pardon me, into the endowment, um, again, to be managed within the city. So that's recapped in point C, but it's also recapped in the financial considerations section of your memo.
So really we envision the process of accepting donations of art to really mimic what we already have in place with Resolution 19 dash 195. So uh, that resolution was passed by council in, in 2019. And we feel like it's actually quite extensive in terms of laying out the process for public donations, um, and, you know, really outlining what donor recognition looks like, what maintenance needs to look like. It actually also references endowments for certain pieces, um, that would be used for maintenance. Um, and so we really feel like that body of work is relevant and it's already in place and we can continue to utilize it effectively um, and apply it to public art as well. Um, but to Liz's point, you know, we recognize though that each donation may be a little bit unique. And so, um, per the resolution, we are allowed to execute individual agreements and we would look to do that with some of the considerations. While we continue on with some of the recommendations, um, outlined in section E. So, you know, we really want to consider the appropriate location for any public donation, including art. We want to make sure that, um, the loc- the, the piece itself really aligns with the use of, of the property, with the, the look and feel of the property, all of those kinds of things. Um, so design features and themes really matching the area that we put them in. You know, the expected life of the artwork may vary depending on what it is. And so we need to consider that when we talk about, you know, expected timeframes for maintenance. The resolution actually outlines like five to 12 years. But of course, we recognize that people who donate art would likely like a longer term agreement than that. And again, that the resolution gives us the flexibility to enter into those longer term agreements, but clearly outline, okay, what is the maintenance expectation? How long do we expect it to survive? And how long will the city PARC's team be responsible for maintaining it? And so, um, donor recognition again is covered in the resolution, but if that needs to vary based on, uh, you know, the, the size or the cost or um, the importance of the donation, we would certainly consider that. Um, and de-commissioning at your disposal becomes really important. Um, while we would love to honor every donation that's been given to us in perpetuity, that's just not realistic. Um, and so making sure that the donor clearly understands that we only have a limited lifetime that we can sustain their donation and, and agreeing on that is important. Um, and then if there ever came a time where we may have to relocate a piece for various reasons, we want the flexibility to be able to do that when it makes sense. So those would be some key considerations. There are more actually outlined in the resolution. Um, and, and again, we would just follow that on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess that's my cue. Third part of the harmon here. No, that's okay. No, I think Zulema, uh, stated that very well. And one thing I would just add is I think it's important to have these agreements to, A, um, when we get 10 years down the road, we won't have disagreements as to what the, uh, obligations of the parties were. And from the city's standpoint, my, um, main concern is, is that we have the flexibility. Should there be a change in circumstances, law, damage, um, or, uh, a future council just decides that they continue to maintain this piece of art is not in the best interest of the public, that we have flexibility, there's no surprises. Um, so, so protects both parties, I think. Uh, the Casper mural project had reached out to the city, um, with regard to the, uh, traffic box mural art, uh, program. And would like to, uh, partner, um, and work with, uh, the city to, to basically vet, uh, the art that will go on those boxes. Uh, because it's public property, there are some First Amendment, uh, issues and some issues with, uh, the, the city just delegating those decisions to a private entity. And so I think through our, uh, conversations, um, we have, uh, come up with a uh, process by which, uh, there can be that collaboration, that the mural project can make those, um, uh, recommendations. And then ultimately, uh, through an MOU, a city council would have the final, uh, say in terms of what goes on, uh, on these boxes. So it becomes government speech. And we, we sidestep some of the other unintended consequences. So if council's amenable to, to kind of going down that, um, path, um, we'll work, uh, to put together an, an MOU that outlines those expectations and then bring it back, uh, a future, uh, council meeting for your consideration.
So several of us, um, participated in a monthly call with a consultant that helps us to identify grant opportunities for various needs we have. And, and so, uh, we have been quite aggressive and quite successful, thankfully, at obtaining grants for various projects that we want to complete. And so, um, as with other items, we will start keeping our ear to the ground in terms of opportunities for grants for public art, um, and bring those to you as they come up with requests to apply if that's appropriate.
And lastly, the point of establishing a separate webpage within our city of Casper website that is really dedicated to public art is something we discussed as a team also, so that anyone that's interested has a one central place that they can go. We want this to be again, kind of a public, um, citizen engagement opportunity also, so that we can hear, um, from what citizens are thinking about from public art. We can put the necessary, necessary requirements out on that page, but we also just want to create some energy. And so we had kind of played around with the design, um, similar to what other communities have done with the theme of Casper, um. Art adds heart to Casper with a little motif of an art palette in the shape of a heart. So, um, that pretty much wraps it up. And, uh, you all are shaking your heads. We ended up on that happy high note.
Right.
Uh, we again, are.
I was shaking my head in agreement.
So we want to know if, again, from a direction standpoint, who might be interested in joining our PART team? And, um, also if we are on the right track as a public art response team with what you all were interested in when you established this goal. So that's our direction request for this evening.
Well, amongst council members. Thanks, Mayor.
I nominate Michael Bond to be on the first. You've been nominated.
It sounds like you could take more than one of us, but, but, uh.
I have my hand up.
Oh, Jenna.
Jenna as well.
Perfect.
We don't even see you at all here anymore. So, uh, I appreciate you speaking up.
Art has heart and I believe I need to be on that committee.
Very good. So it looks like we have two volunteers to be part of PART.
I think you guys need help.
Yeah, I guess. I guess my one only request is, do you think we could get a bureau of a large bird? Bird? No. But, 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 but dealing with a, a specific species of feline. This was a private deal between Liz and I, so, but go ahead.
I said that's denied.
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 Thank you.
But you're okay with how we're progressing with this?
I do, I did have a, I, I was questioning or commenting somewhere, but, um, the, the, I really liked the idea that inventory of the public art. And so I assumed that's something that, that PART team would, would be working. So, I mean, just, yeah, I'm sure it shouldn't, so I'll ignore, but just some thinking was, I think, I love the idea of the website connection, but maybe, I don't know if, uh, it might be worth considering just a print option as well. I don't know. Other people have mentioned that about, you know, this, that brochure or something that kind of highlights the, it could be left for museums and, you know, the, the for Casper, so where folks could, you know, have a, have a directory, if you will, to go, if you wanted to go see the, see the art around town. And then, uh, question about PART also is, is that, would that be strictly limited to, um, to staff and council members? Or are you thinking about potentially there might be community members on that eventually? Or is, I, I read when you talked about, um, the consultation with, you know, conservatives, artists and so forth to, to get a realistic estimate of, of maintenance needs. So this would be more of a kind of an ask needed basis or?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel?
Yeah.
But first of all, thank you for joining our team. You will be great resource. I think you're spot on with what you've been already talking about. So I think that'll be up for discussion.
Okay.
We don't want to get it so huge.
Sure.
We know that.
Sure.
But again, we do see opportunities, again, for citizen engagement with,
Yeah.
with us. And your idea for printed materials as well as input through the website.
Yeah.
Um, and, yeah, I think all of it works. But we do want to have a little bit of that online because I do think all of us get good input um, on the, the group emails that have been established, not only for you all to get council emails, but for us to get input, um, whether it's the planning at Casper, at the YACOM. It's wonderful to see that citizen engagement coming in. So I would envision we would have an email set up to.
So I would envision we would have an email set up too so that we could get the public engagement going with this goal. But again, you'll be with us to help make those decisions and bring them back to your fellow colleagues.
Thank you.
Mayor, counselor, in response to your map question, so that endeavor is already underway and in fact almost done. I was really hoping to have a map to display for you this evening. Um but we're just finalizing the look and feel of it and making sure that there's no gaps in the data. So uh we will have something to share with you um very soon, but once you join our team, we'll hit the ground running and and knowing exactly where all the public art is and identifying locations. To make a really uh selfish pitch, that one of the first areas we consider are Washington Park. We're doing some pretty magnificent um projects in that park. And we have uh the back of a newly renovated building that I think would be a great place for uh an activity themed mural.
Any other questions for the team?
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Go ahead, Johnson Pollock.
Thank you very much. Um first, I would just say this is pretty much exactly what I had in mind when we had this discussion. Um I don't know, a year, year and a half ago, whatever it was, I felt like as we kind of wrestled with the idea of um accepting of public art, I just didn't feel like the infrastructure was in place. And so I feel um that this really um goes a long way in in addressing that. So thanks for all the work putting this together. Um I was just curious, as you think about um developing a process and policy for accepting gifts of art, do we imagine that we would have like criteria set in place upfront? Um you know, in a in a wonderful world where we get inundated with offers of donations, um do you s- expect that the committee would um set some criteria upfront for um what types of donations we um can accept or would that be a ad hoc selection committee? Or or what do you, how do you imagine that we would, you know, deal with whether or not a piece of art is appropriate to accept at all?
Mr. Mayor, I I can take a stab at that, yeah, counselor. So I think the first place we would look at is our donation uh resolution that's in place. I think it really lines out a lot of the processes. And I think whether that's the 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 part committee or or an ad hoc committee, um you know, we would probably at least initially rely on those processes. And then because every um, you know, piece of art is unique, I mean, I think there's going to be a certain amount of, you know, looking at it individually um and and not being able to kind of do a one size fits all um kind of approach. I mean, we certainly as 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 we kind of get up and running, we can look at, you know, standardizing um some of those processes and criteria. But I think if you need to look at, you know, what's the endowment look like, what's the 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 uh life, you know, expectancy of of the art piece, the the amount of time and effort, et cetera. I mean, there's just lots of variables. So I I know that's a great answer. I got says Lema or Liz, if they've got anything to add, but that's how I envisioned it at least.
I think Eric's right in that uh the resolution really is a great starting point in terms of what the process looks like to request a donation of art or request to donate art to the city. And so uh there are a number of criteria already outlined in the resolution. And certainly on a case by case basis, we could add or subtract some of those criteria um as appropriate. And you know, clearly, if we want to define more specific criteria, maybe as it relates to to you know, government speech and all of those kinds of things, we certainly can address those. But I think we've got a great starting point and some of this may be like let's see how the process works with our first request for donation and then we can refine as needed if we if we find big gaps.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Are we okay with part?
Yes.
Yes.
You do have a great face already painted and denying of you. Suspense.
Long as Carter's in there, I don't care.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Don't forget Eric.
Thank you very much, Salima, Liz, thank you. And everybody else who was involved in this process. Uh next would be the agenda review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh counselors. Um referring to your grid document, I just want to point out a couple of things. Um you'll note that a lot of the the topics that we have coming up in the in the work sessions through the fall are largely follow-up items and council goal items and so on. Um councillor Gamroth mentioned a couple of the follow-up items, actually following up to uh tonight's discussion as well, Bunchwood Park, uh being one of them, Veterans Park being another. We plan to just jump jump right in and and talk about what you'd like to see as it relates to both of those facilities. Veterans Park, of course, taking a a much bigger, you know, scope than I initially anticipated. Um we have um uh let's see. One of the larger discussions that we also want to tackle with you, uh certainly before we transition to our new council is the um recycling and composting conversation that council requested a a few weeks back. We're excited to bring that conversation to you and and get uh get your your guidance i- in that important area. Uh a number of other things coming up, of course, as you can see, but uh I don't want to um close this conversation without directing your attention to the very back page with the future item page. It isn't quite docketed yet through uh through the early part of the fall. Uh but we do have some slated times that we'd like to tackle a number of these things, as you can see. However, if you see items that aren't covered, that you'd like to see covered, uh I I would say that's a vital part of this conversation to make sure we get that taken care of according to your your guidance and direction. And that's my report. Your honor.
Very good. Thank you. So I guess we have counsel around the table. We will start with our uh Dunsler Pollock.
And thank you very much. I don't have anything tonight.
Councillor Jensen.
Yep, thank you. I think I'm good. I can't even remember what I did yesterday.
Been there, done that today. Councillor Bond.
Thank you. Uh thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for the nomination and your vote of confidence. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for that. Um I also did want to um just a couple of things I have. The councillor Jensen and I did attend the municipal ban meeting. Uh and just got enough, it was mostly just updates, nothing major. Uh they're very excited about the upcoming van shell renovation. Uh they, you know, they're excited about that. And then we did talk about their schedule. They did give us a draft schedule for next summer for the eight performances plus the, it's plus the uh parade, summer parade. And uh then I did go on a tour last week with uh the rec center staff where we got to see the hub and the uh the aquatic area. So the updates are really exciting. It was was really nice. And that hub is, I think that's such a cool idea. To kind of to kind of drop in. Yeah, it's it's a great idea. I think it'd be a great resource for, they've got a great vision for kind of this drop in childcare where, you know, there's kind of a somewhat super dicey air there. But you set up to thirty kids in that room, it's like, oh my God, I'm saying, but okay. But a good idea and I think it would be a great service to the community and to kids, so yeah. Um and the last of all, the NIC had a great uh very successful art sale and uh auction and and a dollar last week that did did the best we've done in four hundred years. Very good. Thank you, Vic's on here.
Councillor Pacheco.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councillor Haskins.
I don't really have anything aside from the fact that I'm sure most of us, at least most of the community knows that we lost Dr. Sam Bigniri over the weekend. It's a huge loss, not only for the medical community, but for probably the entire county as a whole.
Yeah.
So condolences to everybody who knew him. Was affected by something he did. Had a baby with him and probably worked with him in some way, shape or form. So that'll be a loss. The the memorial hasn't been announced yet, but I'm sure it'll be a big one. That's all I have.
Councillor Gamroth.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, councillor Haskins, for acknowledging the loss of Sam Bigniri. I read a thousand comments, all positive. Uh not a single bad word said about the man, so I always think it's important for us to recognize uh the great people in our community uh when we lose them. Uh as councillor Bond said, uh was thankful to take a tour of the rec last Thursday with some of my colleagues. It was really great to see the progress of the uh aquatic center project and I'm looking forward to that facility opening back up in the next few weeks. I hope citizens are pleased with the work that's been done, including HVAC improvements, cleaning out of pools, replacement of the side structure and some other components, including the hub, which was a cool, interesting feature. Uh I think it's gonna look really nice, so looking forward to that opening back up. I attended the Casper startup challenge pitch night last Thursday at Frontier. Um my understanding is Advance Casper took that over. I I don't know if U-Dub is funding that program anymore. I hope I'm not misinforming. But I think there was a change up in regards to kind of the governing structure of that. And uh I thought that was important to note because we do field questions, or at least I do sometimes about what Casper does for small businesses and promote economic development. And I think this is a really great example of that. Uh I'm always super impressed to see the creativity of our residents and I want to wish congratulations to the three finalists. Uh for people that aren't aware of that program, it's just a really cool program where they give entrepreneurs the resources they need to develop a really compelling slide deck, um give them marketing guidance and uh help them put together a business plan. So it's a great opportunity to uh, you know, promote economic development. And we fund that in part through our contribution to Economic Joint Development Power Board through Advance Casper. It makes its way there eventually. Um had a community dinner at David Street Station last Saturday. It was a four-course meal catered by True Bakery. It was amazing food, followed by live music by uh the band Pathfinder. I'm unfortunately gonna miss their board meeting tomorrow in lieu of the State of the Community luncheon hosted by the Chamber. Uh because I'd like to see our city manager speak, so uh I unfortunately am gonna miss that, but I'll provide an update next time I make it to uh the DBA board meeting. And uh lastly, City Casper Urban Forestry Division's having a public forum, six PM next Tuesday, unfortunately. Uh right at the same time as our city council meeting, but only so many days in a week. Uh so September seventeenth at the North Casper Clubhouse uh in its regards, I believe, uh had to spend a seven hundred thousand dollar Arbor Day grant for maintenance and improvement of our tree canopies in town. So if the trees interest you, if you're really passionate about um adding trees, managing trees, taking care of trees in our community, I'd encourage you to go to that. That's all I got. Thanks.
Councillor Sudden.
I don't think I have. I have a bunch of meetings next week, but I'll talk about them next week.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
I'm going to go to the State of the Community tomorrow so we can go heckle our and then uh Parks and Rec on Thursday. Just as a reminder, we have David Street Station with the Fall Fest coming up on uh September twenty first. So I think that sometimes people don't get that message, but it looks like it's gonna be really fun. And then we've got the Indian relay races coming up September twentieth through the twenty second. So get your tickets for those. So that's all I've got.
Very good. I guess in case we have a a fourth or fifth council member show up at the uh State of the Community tomorrow, do we need to announce a public meeting? Nope. Okay, very good. So just thought I'd ask.
I was, I was, I'm, I should be on the list too.
Do what?
I'm on the list to attend, I think.
Okay, well, here again, it doesn't matter how many of us show up, but that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Because I was planning on being there.
Okay.
So that winds up being at least four. So if one more would show up, we would have a quorum. And that was why
Okay.
I was asking the question.
Gotcha.
Okay, trying to be legal and above board and not screw with public meetings for the for the press.
Thanks.
Okay, very good. Uh beyond that, um I also attended the hub tour and the athletic center. They've done some amazing work over there, uh being able to actually hold up the roof where they had to redo some column bases and uh pretty decent construction work, uh thought planning and process throughout all of that. So uh was very interested from that standpoint. Uh had a CNFR meeting last night. Um there were two thou- twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two people passed through the turnstools at uh the event center during all of the performances of uh the CNFR last year. So that was quite a quite a number. Um we wound up with a seventeen percent increase in in revenue and attendance. So last year was very successful. So wanted to pass that on to people and to uh all of the people up at the event center and staff and everybody that uh from the city and to the public for attending and supporting that activity. That was quite wonderful. And yes, I will be at that uh luncheon tomorrow afternoon as well. So we look forward to hearing how we're doing as if we maybe don't already know. So we do appreciate it. Does anybody else have anything for the good of the community? We thank you all for being here. Have a good evening and have a good rest of the week. Question.
Yes.